Good morning all. January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Curry County Board of Commissioners, I like to say Curry County, Oregon, Board of Commissioners. Introductions here real quick. We have Brad Ricker, Director of Finance. Far left, on my immediate left, Commissioner Chair, almost said Chair, Commissioner Christopher Pash to my immediate right, Mr. John Herzog, County Council John Huddle, and Staff Jesuit. Yes, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. What an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I've had quite an honor for two years to give the line of duty death report for firemen, our military, men and women that we've lost, and of course, public safety, police officers. So the report, final for two thousand twenty, is three hundred and fourteen died in the line of death, or died to death in the line of duty. That's more than double what it was for two thousand nineteen. Quite staggering. Two hundred and eighty-nine men, and this was a surprising statistic I've not seen before, twenty-five women died, again in line of duty. In two thousand twenty, just over three thousand seriously injured, and that's also almost double over two thousand nineteen. Honor the fallen, military deaths, thirty-one in two thousand twenty, that's down from four, for two thousand nineteen, so that's good news. Firefighter deaths up twenty-one compared to two thousand nineteen. We stand at seventy-eight, it was fifty-seven in two thousand nineteen. So if we could, offer those that we've lost, a moment of silence. Thank you again very much, Board. Okay, a couple comments I want to make, I want to give the other Commissioners a chance to, just before we go into Agenda approval and possible amendments. Yesterday was a long day, really a productive day. A little over three weeks after we had a Treasury vacancy, we have a new appointment. His name is Douglas Baker. He is from Port Orford. Don't hold it against him that he is quite the cyclist. He's been in Curry County nine years. He impressed the Board with his background and certainly his interview. I think he might be here, Director Ricker, later on today at one o'clock, just to start getting acquainted, and I'd like the Board to consider a press release. It's an important moment for Curry County as we move forward. So, welcome, Mr. Baker. We all greatly look forward to working with him. Also, yesterday, we, as all of you know, I think most of you know, we got a wonderful report. I see, I did not notice until just now that Public Health Administrator Ward is in the audience. I certainly want to acknowledge her. You heard us report that Curry County went from a high, excuse me, an extreme risk, two levels down, to moderate risk. It was really the only county of thirty-six that had a drop of two. In fact, unfortunately, some counties have gone up from high to extreme. So this is very good news. One thing I failed to mention yesterday, or at least I didn't emphasize it enough, is even a better reminder, a good time for us to remember not to drop our guard. We still, thank goodness, our small businesses and our families and our community members have done everything that we've asked them to do, and so, a lot of credit goes to them, a lot of credit goes to our public health organization, and it's probably the best news that I've had personally and as a Commissioner in the last eleven months. Our restaurants will be able to open on the fifteenth. Economic Development Coordinator Madison and her assistant, Miranda Plaguey kindly come up, we all kind of had the same idea, how could we help our restaurants since they're opening up variety? And just a public notice, maybe a resolution, maybe a proclamation, I don't know what would be most appropriate, or what the Board might be in favor of and in agreement with, just to let the local folks know, in the middle of January, if they can, to patronize, at least starting on Friday for dinner, maybe even lunch. Boy, do they need, do they need help and patronage, and, you know, I've, Ms. Plaguey worked up a very rough draft, and, you know, I can read that real fast, I think it would be in our interest, and I think it would be worth the time, so maybe I'll go ahead and do that now, and then I want to know if Administrator Ward might want to say a couple words? Would you mind right now? That'd be great. Every time we have a public comment, I'm going to encourage everyone to remember to adjust the microphone specific to you, starting with Administrator Ward. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Board. Sherry Ward, Public Health Administrator. Thank you, everybody. It has been a long road, and it's still going to continue to be a long road. I understand we went down to moderate. I want to first off, thank my public health staff. They have actually stepped up to the plate in the last couple of months to help me get some of this contact tracing, and they've been double and triple load on some of the regular duties that we have, so I can't thank them enough, and I really appreciate them really stepping up to the plate. On another note, I would like to thank the community for doing their part as well, but doesn't mean we're out of the hot zone here. So we do have a two-week period that we are able to open up at the moment, and what I really, really encourage everybody is to please, I know it's a tough road, practice the social distancing, if you are ill, please stay home. If you even start feeling that way, please stay home. Contact your medical provider, whatever you need to do in regards to that. If you feel that you need to be tested, then be tested. But one of the things we do really encourage is, don't let your guard down just because of the next two weeks. I know we're all cramped up, and I know we really want to be back out, but we really have to keep the common sense still going a little bit, be more protective as well, but still, just, you know, practice the social distancing, wearing your mask when appropriate, and I just really wanted to encourage that. We may see a spike. I do know that there is some rumblings in regards to community partners who are going to want to do some testing events coming up. So with those testing events, unfortunately, we may or may not see a spike in cases, so that, you know, I'm just letting you guys be aware that we might be in moderate right now, but there is a possibility we may go up. So I just want to, hopefully, we don't, and hopefully, we can stay on this nice even path, but I can't predict this, and I can't predict how everybody is going to react, so I know we're struggling and wanting to hug each other and have a good time and let our hair down, but just, if you do, just be a little more cautious. That's all I ask, and ask for the community so we can get back to some type of normalcy coming up here soon, but that's, on the spot, I was just getting there, so that's what I, my words of encouragement would be, is to just please remember to practice the social distancing and be safe out there. On that note, I have nothing more to add, other than I know people are inquiring about the vaccines, and we are partnering with Curry Health Network at this moment, and vaccines, and so everybody's doing a lot of vaccine planning right now. So we have put some information out on the Public Health webpage in regards to vaccines. We don't have a lot of information for you in regards to that, but it is coming, so we're just working on the plans right now. So hang in there, everybody, and just be safe. That's all I ask.
Administrator Ward, thank you very much, and thanks for bringing up the vaccine, too. That is, you said that we don't have a lot of information, really, nobody in the state does, is that correct, as far as, it's not that they don't have a plan, but there's been some variables of, as I understand, they've been unable to control, and so they're trying very hard to overcome those?
That is correct. Out of nowhere, then all of a sudden, I mean, there was staging that was happening in regards to vaccine planning, so first responders, healthcare workers were part of that group, first group, Phase 1A, then it went to Phase 1B, then there were subgroups, now all of a sudden, yesterday, we're finding out that Governor says, everybody from sixty-five and up couldn't be getting vaccines. So when things are launched like that without getting local public health authorities and partners in place first, it makes it very trialsome for everybody to kind of scramble, but there are plans in place, it's just adjusting, adjusting accordingly and working with your partners. And so just bear with us, the vaccine will be here, the vaccine and planning and how many, you know, it's a lot of undertake because it opens up the full population of the sixty-five and older, so, which means we just don't want a mass vaccination. It has to be planned appropriately, so we just want to make sure that we're doing that correctly, because if we open it up, one of the things is, there could be adverse reactions to vaccines as well, so when you give it to it, and so you want to make sure those individuals are monitored correctly if there was an adverse reaction, so we just want to make sure all those plans in place.
Did you have something?
I did. I just want to tag on to what you were saying a while ago. I noticed that on one of the charts, they had the last, they had all the counties in the state, and they had the last three ratings of what they were, and I think of all the counties in the state, there were only two that went down. Everyone else's numbers went up, and Curry County was one of those two that we went down on positive cases in the last couple of weeks. So I know you're working awful hard, and I just want you to know that this Board realizes how hard you're working, and
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
And like I said, I can't do it alone, I have a small but mighty team, and they've really picked up the plate lately, they really have, because I just couldn't do it anymore. So we are still, all of us are working, contact tracing, getting on those positives when they come in, and working with the partners down in Del Norte County, Coos County. I just wish we, I wish we had the full solid partnership that we had years ago in the sense of that we weren't, we weren't minus the infrastructure of public health. So we're battling the minus infrastructure of public health on top of the pandemic, and so that has made it, I always say challenges are opportunities. This one, though, has been a major opportunity, so I just hope that we can all come together and look forward to a brighter future. That's the way I look at it.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
No, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're starting to put quite a bit of emphasis on anyone of any age that has one or especially two existing health conditions, can you clarify that, or do you, have you heard that?
I have, I'm not going to speak out of turn in regards to that, no, I have not heard that, I have not, so, like I said, sometimes you guys are a little bit more current with some data than I am, and that's because I am actually in the midst of working with individuals who have contracted COVID-19 or quarantined. So some of my research, or what you guys are hearing on the news, honestly, I wish I could sit there and tell you everything, but unfortunately, sometimes the community is a little more up on that than I am, and that is only because I am in the midst of working with individuals.
But if there are people out there that are hearing this, and you have two serious health conditions, or even one, you might want to consider trying to qualify, so, okay. Commissioner Pash?
I just, I did happen to read that as well, and it was first federal, and then I think the Governor recognized it yesterday. I think what it is, is going to be now anyone sixty-five and older or with a pre-existing condition are going to qualify automatically for the vaccine.
And that's what I did hear or read real briefly, and like I stated, I mean, it's just been, it's one thing after another, and I, sometimes people just have to sit where I'm sitting at, and understand, we're taking them as they come, I mean, our phones are going off, ringing off the hook, especially right now with vaccines, but then it's still about testing, and then, of course, we still have positive and negative tests we have to deal with as well, so, okay.
Administrator Ward?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good day, everybody.
Well, thanks for cleaning the microphone there. Okay, Board, item number three, Agenda amendments approval. I'm going to go to Vice Chair Herzog first, please. Any changes?
No, but I did notice we have an influx of Fair Board applicants and one position open, is that correct?
Three.
Three positions open. So we're
You want to pull that?
Are we going to make it, I mean, it would be hard for me to look, you know, I just received these, I would, I would hope that we could get a little more time before we make an appointment.
Okay.
You know, I just, I haven't vetted the, looked at these very closely, so.
I agree with you. Council Huddle?
Well, I noticed that we had a public comment from Caitlin Coleman, who's at the fair. You might want to just wait until you get to this item to decide whether you want to continue it at that time, after you've heard a little more information. In other words, you don't have to make the decision to pull it right now, you can, when it comes up, you can continue it if you're, if you're not comfortable after hearing.
We don't want to hear from her, though, no, I'm kidding.
And Commissioner Pash has a
Commissioner Herzog, is that all right with you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Pash?
Yeah, and I just want to say, you know, I, as the liaison to the fair, we had a meeting the other night after our Board meeting, and the fair is expressing a need to get this taken care of, because the other night, we almost, they almost didn't have a quorum, so we've only got four people left on the Board, and there were only three that could come to the meeting, and one of those was actually last minute, so.
So you'd rather not postpone?
I'd like to get the information out, and then maybe during lunch, we could look at things, and then maybe vote on it later after the meeting, if you get time and you're comfortable with the amount of information that you got, that you'd feel comfortable to vote on that, then we could do it, if not, we could put it off another week, but I'd like to try and get this done today if we can.
I think that's good, and lunchtime, there goes my nap, but.
Well, the only person I really know is that Robert Chab
Chabante?
Chabante, that we met last week, and so I, you know, so, anyway.
Thank you, okay, I think that's good, so we have a consensus there, correct?
Yes.
Any other
No, sir.
Changes?
None for me.
Mr. Director Ricker?
We need to pull item eleven A, higher order. The background check has not come back yet, so we're going to pull that, and then we'll put it on for the next agenda.
Okay.
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I had prepared an order for an appoint, to appoint Douglas Baker to the Treasury vacancy, and I'd submitted that last night, I think it still had a few pieces that had to be put in, so I'd like to have that in there, and then also, under Executive Session, add F items that are exempt, which would be attorney-client information, one nine two six six oh, two F. So those are the two items that I'd like you to put on there, and I think the appointment could go at eleven later on.
As a higher order?
It's technically an appointment to a vacancy, it's similar to a higher order, but it's technically not a higher order. But yeah, it could go on that spot if that's okay with the Board, and then hopefully by then I could get the little, there's a couple of dates and stuff that need to be filled in, right?
So you'll have the order done?
The order was sent out to you all last night, I believe, and even to the BAC office, so it just needs a couple of dates to be filled in, so.
I don't know how I missed that.
Well, it's a lot going on, yeah. Maybe I didn't send it out, that's possible.
Oh, I think I didn't, I didn't read it, but I saw there was a bunch of emails, so.
That doesn't qualify, a bunch of emails. So anyway, no worries.
J.J., did you get the draft order last night?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so anyways, it's in the works, but it should be on the agenda, so, because we need to have some kind of document record in the Clerk's Journal and all that fun stuff.
Thank you very much. So any other additions or amendments to the agenda? Further discussion? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve as amended?
I'll second. Let's go to roll call, Mr. Jesuit, please.
Mr. Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes, sir.
Chair Boyce?
Aye.
Motion heard unanimously.
So next we have public comments, I want to mention that on public comments, we want to, the three minutes is a little bit arbitrary, we generally stated that, but any public comments need to stay with the agenda items, so we've been fairly good at that, but sometimes we stray a little bit, and in the order they were received, first is Fair Event Center Manager Caitlin Coleman. Just the microphone, please.
I'm sure you're pretty close to the same height. Hi, good morning, thank you for hearing me this morning. As Commissioner Pash said, I'm here to speak a little bit about the Event Center appointments. We currently have three open positions, two were term expirations, and one was an early resignation that has one year remaining on the term. Last, I saw yesterday evening, there was three applications, oh, there's five now, so I can't speak on the two that I haven't seen, but I've seen the three that were there as of last night, and I think it's a good representation of county, and it would all be good additions to the Board. Excuse me, in the end, it comes down to your opinions as Commissioners, you are the ones that choose the Board and set what happens, but as, excuse me, Commissioner Pash said, we normally have these positions appointed in December to start in January, so we've had one meeting last week, down three members, and we have another meeting on Friday for our second meeting of the month, that would, if you guys don't appoint, would be down those three members again. So if possible, I would appreciate if you guys could review applications over lunch and discuss trying to appoint those positions in the afternoon for, to fill our Board up so that we can continue moving forward with the motion that we've been having in the past to keep things going. I feel like we're making some really positive strides, and we want to welcome the new appointees and continue to move forward, so, that's what I've got.
Questions?
No, sir.
No? We're ready to go.
Thank you.
We'll do our best.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next we have David Nederweil, please. Good to see you, sir.
Good morning. I also go by Dallin, that's what I like to be called.
You're welcome to take your mask off when you speak, if you like. Pardon me interruption.
All right. Is it okay to keep my cover on?
Betcha.
Make sure it's all right. My first comment and question is the opening of our restaurants. Wonderful news, that and being downgraded, or not an extreme lockdown anymore, so that's good. My comment would be just really advertising, advertise the safety, but also advertise the pizza place, other places, port hole, and just really push it out there. Social media, but also old-school media type of, even, you know, have a little parade or something, you know?
You just volunteered to organize that.
That was just a suggestion, and that's wonderful news, and so it's only for a two-week trial period, is that, is that what I heard? Is that what I heard, to see how it goes?
It wouldn't be under the trial category, it's just that we would, presumably, if all goes well, it would be automatically renewed, but not without the dates really being clarified. Commissioner Pash?
Yeah, it's every two weeks, the state reassesses each county
Wonderful.
by the amount of cases, up or down, and then they rerate you.
I understand, great, thank you. And the county fair, as of today, is it officially on for this year?
Wow.
Chris?
Well, that depends every two weeks.
Yes, sir.
In the meetings with the Fair Board as the liaison for them, we are, right now, we are looking to have a fair, so, and actually, we're looking to expand the fair, so hopefully that all happens.
I think that's going to, it's going to be wonderful. Well, that's all for me at this time, thank you. Thanks, Dallin.
David, thanks for coming today.
You're welcome.
Did you have any questions?
I have a comment about him, though.
Yes, sir.
I just, you know, the community may not know you, but I know you, and you're a veteran, you're an asset to the community, you get involved in a lot of things, he's been involved in the foundation at my ranch as well, and I just want to say, your community thanks you for your service.
Well, thanks. One more comment?
We'll wind you up.
I recently applied and was approved for understanding homelessness or being on a committee, I think that's the politically correct term, to help with homelessness situation here in Curry County, so I'm looking forward to working with the team to help address that. I've been in that situation before, and I know a lot of veterans are in that situation now, and so I'm hoping to be an asset and to really help wherever I can in that.
David?
Thank you.
Real quick?
Yes.
As Commissioner Pash said, I've known Dallin a lot of years, I've attended church with him and listened to him, he's, he can play the guitar and sing, and an asset to the community, so thanks again, Dallin.
Thank you, all right.
Your veteran service, I know I've asked you before, but I apologize, I'm drawing a blank, are you a Vietnam veteran?
No, sir.
Okay, I thought you might be a little bit too young.
I volunteered in the early eighties for the USMC. Amen, brother. It was an experience. All right, thanks, enough of me.
Thank you again. Next on the public comments, Connie Hunter. Oh, you want to go after the presentation?
I was going to say, can I ask permission to go after the presentation?
Certainly.
Regarding Major Paul Hoynaki.
Okay, we'll bring you back up, if that's okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Barnes, please, on the noise ordinance.
Morning, David Barnes. I, I listened last week when the woman came in and spoke about the suffering that she's having from being, from her neighbors, and I, I just got to say, I used to have a neighbor who used county code, or who used code and building as a hammer to beat me up with, and, you know, I just, I'm a, we're a rural county, we're, I understand that people are closer together down in Harbor than they are in other places in the county, but it's like Brookings, a couple of weeks ago, passed an ordinance about sleeping in your car that they don't intend to enforce. I listened to Sheriff, when he was here last week, talk about how difficult it would be for him to enforce a noise ordinance, and, you know, before you do this, I really want you to consider everything about it, if you're not going to be able to enforce it, what's the point of putting a law on the books, and, you know, Commissioner Pash, like you mentioned yesterday, you and I lock horns, and we don't agree on everything, and on this one here, I just can't stand with you on this one, brother, I just, I'm opposed to something like this, you know, people need to learn to live together, like I advised the woman who was here last week, if it's that bad, go get yourself a lawyer and have your lawyer sue the landlord, you know, for allowing the nuisance to continue, but I don't think that ordinance is the way to resolve neighbor problems, and I never have. Thank you.
Item five A, the proclamation for honoring Vietnam War veteran Paul Hoynaki. Call on up, sir.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry? We're, yeah, we're going to stall for just a moment, we have one respectful
Sorry, I probably should have entered a slip in, I received a statement from Gordon Clay that he would like read.
For the public comment.
A public comment, if that's all right.
We'll do it, we'll do it after this presentation.
That's fine.
There you go, thank you. Well, Paul, it's been great to get to know you, it's great to see you at the Rees Across America, it was a great turnout, kind of a, kind of a cold dreary day, but my goodness, the salute, the guns, the hearts, the mayor spoke, it was just, just wonderful. So your service to our country, we've been wanting to kind of pull you in here for the last two months, and it's a, it's a real honor to be able to ask the Board, you know, they haven't turned me down on six so far yet in the last few months, and they, they have few months. And they, they have really been supportive in at least one Vietnam veteran or combat veteran per month. And your story is, well, I'll let the folks decide, but I want to read the proclamation that we put together for you. Curry County Commissioners honor Curry resident Paul Hoynaki, proud and brave Vietnam, United States airman, airman, excuse me, January 13th, 2020. Major Paul Hoynaki, military service November 1961 to December 1981, 20 years. You completed flight training and commissioned in September of 1962. You served in the Strategic Air Command flying the B-47 and B-58 bombers. If anybody has a chance to Google the size of those planes and how important they were in both World War II and the Vietnam War, it's, they're an amazing aircraft. B-57, excuse me, B-47 and B-58 bombers and spending many unexciting hours on nuclear alert. His team had to be ready to launch for World War III, but always hoping they never would be faced with that. To raise the excitement level, veteran Hoynaki volunteered for Vietnam in the F-105 fighter aircraft. After aircraft transition and jungle survival training, his class of 14 aviators reported to the Tokli Air Force Base in Thailand. Flying almost every day escorting yet another big one, B-52 bombers, supporting the Marines at the DMZ Demilitarized Zone with bombs, rockets, and 20-millimeter cannon fire. The year passed quickly. Their specialty as wild weasels was rooting and destroying North Vietnamese SAM surface-to-air missiles and flak anti-aircraft batteries. So our bombers could hit those critical targets first. Warheads on foreheads was the trick of the time. Getting to know you in this last paragraph that you sent, and it's a quote, word-for-word quote that you said, means a great deal to many, many Americans, and certainly to the people sitting up here. What an honor. You stated, "We lost Major Carl Dice, Captain Doug Mahan, Captain Joe White from your squadron." Our squadron. "And I want them to be remembered. We fortunate ones got to come home, raise families, and retire. Those real heroes gave everything, and their plans and dreams ended in a hot, humid, stinking jungle halfway around the world." They are the ones to really honor. Can we give them a moment of silence? Thank you. Thank you again. Connie, would you like to come up? But Paul, please, if you want to say a couple of words, or strictly, strictly optional?
Okay. I am honored that you recognize me for my service. First off, I want to thank you for meeting all the board here. First, I've seen of you except for Commissioner Boyce, but good to meet you all.
Likewise.
I just want to, want to thank you for being honored here. And I'm into aviation, so I'm not giving up with it. I have another hat I can put on here. It's Mission Aviation Fellowship. I volunteer for them out of Nampa, Idaho. And it's kind of the hidden airline in the world. 140 airplanes in 16 countries. We're flying every 11 minutes, a takeoff or landing, taking medical supplies, vaccines, missionaries, all, all what's needed to the outlying folks. And there's a local gentleman here that's worked for him for over 40 years, John Cad, from Oregon. I don't know if anybody know him, but he's back here in the States now because his mom is ill. But I'm just thankful to be able to do that.
Paul, stay there. You may have forgot, we actually communicated a couple of years ago regarding John Cad. Most of his missions for his ministry were in Africa. And for a vacation, he would fly into our lodge, Paradise Lodge, on 1,800-foot airstrip. And he and his family, he was one of the best pilots I've ever seen. He never got me in a plane. You know, the, the entryways or the approaches to the Paradise Strip were not that great, but he was just an incredible pilot. And those kind of airstrips, including Africa, were nothing to him. And so to hear his name mentioned, you know, 15, 20 years later by you, and a reminder of the tremendous ministry that he supported, he probably made $300, $400 a month and for his expenses. But to have that connection, thank you. Commissioner Pash?
I just want to say thank you for your service in Vietnam as well. You know, in a war we never intended to want to win. And people went and did it anyway because that was what they were asked to do. And the giving hearts, not only for my family, but your family and many others that gave, they gave all. I, I'm a pilot as well. I've only got a couple thousand hours, but I've flown hard IFR a lot, but I can't imagine doing it having someone shooting at me. So what a rush that must be. But I just want to commend you for your service and especially being involved in that group as well. They do a lot of good around the world.
Mission Aviation Fellowship.
Thank you.
Anything else, Paul?
I'm fine, thank you.
Connie, please come up. Connie Hunter?
My name's Connie Hunter, and I live in Curry County, a proud citizen of Curry County. I brought two of my favorite things today. This one, I'm gonna leave with the Board of Commissioners.
Lysol.
Yes.
We'll take it.
And by the way, my husband doused me before I left, and I doused myself in the parking lot before I came in. David Barnes will vouch for that as he watched me. Now, I have gotten compliments from a veteran in the room who has his own newspaper, I'm not mentioning names, who once told me he liked the smell of my perfume. I never told him it was Skip's obsession, but he didn't compliment me today on my Lysol scent. So thank you for not turning the light on yet, but I want to say how glad I am to Commissioners Boyce, Herzog, and Pash for continuing to serve in this capacity on the Board of Commissioners and welcome you, Commissioner Herzog. We haven't talked in this venue before, and I'm grateful to have that opportunity. And I know y'all knew Dallin and have worked with Dallin, but I'm the one that talked them into being here today. So I want to, I want to claim that. And we may have some political differences, but we see heart to heart, and that's what this is really about. So, Major Paul Hoynaki, I have to tell you some stories about him too, but he's one of those, I don't need no stinking kudos kind of guys. Now, I'm way off a script because I left my, my script on my phone, and I left that in the car. What we just call that COVID brain. And go with that. But the last person I saw before I went into quarantine and I was sitting with him at the table was Major Paul. And he had to sit with me just for a second and console me when I got the news that my neighbor had tested positive and Skip had been exposed by that neighbor, and I had to leave that meeting. In my absence and during that quarantine, which, the 16th of December, I got the positive COVID notice. And so it's 28 days today, I believe, if I did my math right. I wasn't able to go out and do the things that needed to be done. And our Veterans Task Group that's been put together on behalf of the Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council did all the work. And the encouragement of that group, under the leadership, and we're gonna call it quiet leadership, of Paul Hoynaki, we stayed it together. He helped me spiritually, emotionally, and quietly in ways that I can never repay. So as we update his resume, if you'll give me a little piece of that opportunity, Paul is a member of the Veterans Task Group. We are so excited that he also signed up for a training for Peer Support Specialist for Veterans. We have a goal that I'm calling the Power of 10, to get 10 veterans and a couple of family members in there trained as peer support for post-pandemic mental health support. And what the research is telling us is our veterans will, may have issues triggered beyond the pandemic or beyond a COVID exposure that include depression, anxiety, and PTSD. And I can tell you from my own experience with COVID that that's just part of the disease progression. We experience severe anxiety. So I know that Major Paul has the skills to bring me into perspective. He's gonna be awesome as a Peer Support Specialist. He already is doing it. He's just gonna get a piece of paper that says that. And I want to mention something, and I'm very, very pleased that Mrs. Britt Boyce introduced me to Braver Angels, which is a national organization that is, right now, currently working hard to depolarize our country. I put out some information about a training that's available through Braver Angels. And even though Paul and I differ politically on many things, we see our heart on everything, and we know that there's a bigger purpose in all of this. And we're, it looks like we're gonna do that book study and training together. So that's amazing. And the purpose is to heal the divides. So that's leadership. So as we go through the next few months, we're all gonna have to come forward with something and pay it forward. And I want to, the reason I brought this, and I'm glad Dallin brought up veterans and homelessness, this was given to me by a female veteran who was living in her van on Valentine's Day. That was part of her home decor. Okay, this, this is so meaningful to me. It was also the day that Tom Ledbetter, who was the Disabled American Veterans Local Commander, passed away. And because I couldn't be in two places at once, that was a hard day for me, and I'll always remember that day. But what I know is, even though we lost a good veteran, we have more veterans stepping up to the plate. And I encourage us to consider, as a county, that 2021 be designated the year of veterans, service members, and family members. And I'd like to take this time to have our veterans identify either by raising their hands or standing up, and then the family members to join in that by either raising their hand and standing up. Because I'm just doing a little veterans and family members sense in this room. If I could pass the permission of the commission to do that. Veterans?
Paul, come on up to the podium, please. If I, if I may, I want to recognize David Nederfeld again, Don Bemis, Sam Vitale. Can we stand up with you now? Would that be okay?
And family members, come on. We need you.
Right on. Debbie, thank you. Good job, guys. Thank you.
So I've gone on way too long, but I have one more thing I want to say. We lost a daughter of a veteran. Her name was Carolyn Milliman. You know her as the wife of City Manager Gary Milliman.
Yeah.
Her father was a veteran, and she always honored veterans. And I can't do anything right now to help raise money for cancer in her memory. But I am a wannabe convalescent plasma donor. And I encourage Curry County, those people who have survived COVID, to consider that and possibly consider a convalescent plasma blood drive in Curry County. Thank you all.
Connie, just as you, the very second, you mentioned Carolyn Milliman. The sun come through the back windows there in the hallway, first time in four days. Thank you. One more question, if I may? You mentioned 2021, the year, I may not have got your language precise, but 21, I'm sorry, 2021, the year of the veteran services and vets' families?
Designated the year of veterans, service members, and family members.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll work on that. Thank you very much.
That's because you guys get things done on this board.
That's what we want to hear. Before we go to the next item, I want to go back to the COVID-19 Curry County level of risk going down and just read parts of this, and I'll make sure the board gets a copy and on the assumption that they will want to do something in this direction. I'll, a couple of whereas's that refer to Governor Brown, the dates, executive orders, et cetera. I'll not repeat that. Not that they're not noteworthy, but just in the interest of time here. Whereas pursuant to ORS, the number, and based on facts described above, Governor Kate Brown has executed another number. Accordingly, she has extended executive order such as a state of emergency for an additional 60 days or a fifth time through March 3rd, 2021. That's a pretty important date. Unless extended or terminated earlier by the governor. Whereas the fifth extension of ORS 2003, the subsequent extreme status has created a dire need for economic relief for all restaurants in Curry County, and whereas Curry County has bravely participated in the mandated tiered program to keep all-in dining closed until, as a county, we could work together to decrease our exposure rate to exit the tier for extreme closures. Whereas our residents have fully complied and led to Governor Kate Brown's office communicating to Curry County officials that we are moving down from extreme to moderate, which allows for in-dining at our county restaurants. Whereas we, as a board, now encourage residents to help our restaurants stay open by becoming, again, a patronage of their favorite eateries. Now, therefore, the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby proclaims, beginning January 15th, 2021 through January 18th, 2021, it should be known as Curry County Eat Out at Your Favorite Restaurant Weekend. This is a rough draft, but well done. I just would like a consensus or even a vote, a vote of the board if they want to proceed, and we'll work on this some more and bring it back for final approval. Or can I get a, get an okay on this with amendments? And then you would sign later if you are comfortable signing after the changes and slight additions. It might need to be a little bit shorter, but the idea is we need to get this out in the next couple of days if we can and boost the whole weekend, the 15th through the 18th. Your thoughts, Vice Chair?
I'm all for it.
Okay.
Yes, I have a small concern with it and offending some of the people in the county.
Okay.
We're talking only about restaurants there. We're not, you know, there's a lot of businesses in this county that are suffering. I know of several that I've spoken with in the last month or so that are, a couple of them are gonna close, and a few of them are like, their door is hinged shut right now. They're trying to keep it pushed open. But, so I think to just recognize the restaurants, and that's a good thing, but perhaps adding something there that, you know, we support all business in Curry County. And please, you know, let's leave the big box stores. Let's, let's, let's stop going to the Home Depots and, and, you know, let's go to the local hardware stores, the local businesses and shops, and give them the money.
I agree.
That they're working so hard to stay open.
Thank you, Commissioner. The only thing I'd add to that, a lot of those small businesses are open, and I'm not- not sure that the refined legality is there, but this does go along more with the work we've done through Yamhill County, Dr. Ely, the challenges there that the board unanimously approved. So, but I'm in favor of making sure that we don't leave anyone out. I think the emphasis this weekend, though, would be the restaurants, because they could sure use customers. Back to basics. Okay? So do I have a, do we need a motion on that? I don't think we do. I think if I could maybe even work on this some more and possibly have it to you available to review this afternoon or even during lunch, we'll see what, we'll see what we can do there. So back to the agenda. Action item, the review and approve minutes for, go ahead? Whoops, I'm sorry.
Do you, I still had Gordon Clay's statement to read for public comment if we wanted to do that. Okay. So this statement was given to us by Gordon Clay. He could not be here today. It reads, "January is National Poverty. January is National Poverty in American Awareness Month. And one of the goals of Curry County Suicide Awareness and Prevention Council is to inform the community of the many facets that help create our nation's highest suicide rate. While the poverty rate is subject to go down nationally for the sixth consecutive year, and Oregon's rate is projected to end 2020 at 8.7%, poverty has a higher impact on rural communities, especially when it comes to youth. According to the U.S. Census Bureau data reporting years 2010 through 2019, Curry County's percentage of the population living below the federal poverty level was 13.4." Some facts relating to rural counties. As this pandemic continues to affect so many of our citizens' lives, health-wise and economically, a new study suggests that county-level suicide rates in the United States has a strong tie with county poverty rates, while no relationships were found between county measures of unemployment or foreclosures. Children living in the counties with the highest concentrations of poverty were 37% more likely to die by suicide than children living in counties with the lowest poverty rates, and they were 87% more likely to die by firearm. The importance of talking to your kids about poverty. If you are a parent who doesn't often worry about putting food on the table or having a warm place for your child to go to sleep, wrapping your arms around this conversation may be quite difficult. But without a clear explanation, kids may not understand why some kids get free lunch at school or why there's a homeless person asking for money. This may cause them to make inaccurate assumptions about people living below the poverty line. Poverty is a complex issue that can stem from a variety of reasons that are too difficult for young children to understand. But even though issues surrounding hunger and homelessness are complicated, it's important to talk to kids about poverty. As Jonathan Glenn once said, "Poverty is not the absence of wealth, it's the absence of dignity."
Director Ricker, thank you. Nobody says it better than Gordon, huh? Next item, 7A, review and approve the minutes December 17, emergency meeting.
Did we do consent agenda?
We have to do the consent agenda still.
Oops. Is that what you were going to say, too?
Yep.
Okay. I skipped right over that. Item 6A, point one, member to position two to the Curry County Compensation Board.
So moved.
Second.
God, that's great. Any discussion? Thank you. Roll call.
Yes.
Moved and seconded.
I made the motion and seconded.
Okay.
I second it.
Mr. Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herschel.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
We did that so fast, even JJ.
That's great, man.
That was unbelievable.
The Christmas miracle.
Well, not Christmas again. So the reason I brought item 7A, review and approve the minutes of December 17, that was the emergency meeting when we all had concerns regarding the county treasurer position and possible vacancy. The reason I brought this up because included in the minutes, or the lack of being included, was that two, well, no, one elected official was not allowed to stay in the executive session, nor was her deputy. And I've always promoted, and I think it's very important, that any elected official has the authority and the responsibility even to come into our executive sessions. And so they were asked to leave, and against my objections. And so I want that to be reflected in the minutes, and I'd like to have more approval on that. And I think it sets the precedent, hopefully for the future, that why would we disregard or deny access to any Curry County elected official, which as you know, there are eight? So discussion on that, please. Council Huddle?
Thanks. Really, Commissioner Boyce, Mr. Chair, excuse me, executive session, who is in is the will of the board collectively. And, you know, we've had some discussion. The board governs all matters of county concern except those, you know, that are statutorily assigned, and, you know, we've had some discussion, you know, the sheriff. You know, for the most part, the board doesn't run the sheriff and run the assessor his business too much, or the clerk, or the treasurer, unless there is some statutory authority. So from a legal point of view, I think they would have, you know, some authority to be in the room on matters involving their particular operation, but if it's not a matter involving their operation, I think the board, and even then, the board would have authority to determine who's in the executive session. So I don't want the board to think that there is authority for anyone to be in the executive session who the board doesn't choose to be. It's a, what you're talking about more or less is policy and what a policy is you'd like to see, and maybe it's based on some past practice, but since I've been here, the board has always chosen whether to include or not include any other elected official or anyone in the executive session. So, but yes, it was true that the board elected not to have the clerk attend. It was a matter of an election. I believe the clerk said before they left, "As long as you don't have any questions about the election, I'll go." So that's my recollection of what happened at that meeting.
So as a small county, is that a good thing, I guess, is my question to the board? Are we, do we make hard feelings? You know, whether they are a one-term elected official or a five-term elected official, trying to pull this county together? And honestly, I'm sure most of them have no desire to be here if they can't contribute or if it's not an issue that's of interest to them and their service to the citizens. I just, yeah, and this has been an issue with me for the four years I've been here, and I've communicated that. You've been here five years, and it's, I can't see the rationale and the building behind the policy if that's, if we can just, as a board, on a two-to-one vote, say, "You're out." So at the very least, I want that included in the minutes that they were asked to leave. And I still disagree with that, but we don't need to spend a lot of time on it. I've made my point, and if I can get direction or agreement on that, I'd like to pursue it, to have it put in the meeting. It's for the December 17 so-called emergency meeting. Thank you. Yes?
Were you addressing me or?
Yes, Commissioner Pash.
Sorry, I didn't know which one. My question is, it's already reflected in the minutes on the recordings and on the video. A lot of, as we've asked JJ to make his minutes very brief, and then we can always refer to the others. So, I mean, if you want to add that particular thing to here, you know, that's fine with me, but I can understand why JJ didn't include it because it's, you know, we've asked him to make his minutes brief, and the record speaks for itself on video and on the audiotapes.
Julie Schmelzer took the minutes because I was working remotely that day.
Okay.
And so I put my name on there in addition to Ms. Schmelzer's on account of I'm the one who submitted it to the board.
Steph Jeswood, thank you. So in the interest of time, we're going to have shorter meetings, when that would maybe be two sentences to properly reflect what happened that day? That's not saving time, in my opinion. So you said you, I want to make sure I understand that you're okay with including that in the minutes. I'm not asking you to set policy because it's not on the agenda. I may at some point, may not. Commissioner Herschel, do you want to weigh in on this?
I would just say that as the board and serving on other boards, it's always been the will of the board, if you, to have an executive session board only, and sometimes you can, and then you determine, as we did yesterday, in fact, who stays in the room and who doesn't. And you come to a consensus on that, and so that would be my recommendation, and if it's, you know, if you have to vote, if there's some disagreement, which, you know, normally there isn't, but then you vote, and always with, when you leave, if it's two-to-one or eight-to-four or whatever, majority wins and we walk away and support it. So that's my comments.
I just want to make sure that, and again, in the interest of building a team spirit and pulling everybody together, the amount of value that's in people that have been here for a long period of time, I don't want to discount that, and I do not ever want them to feel respected, disrespected, I'm sorry. So I don't know if we have a vote here or if we have enough of a consensus. I want the meeting minutes to be reflected with what happened that day.
And your reflection is that the?
The one elected official was asked to leave.
Okay, and I'm fine with that. So you want to have a motion?
I don't think we need a motion, do we?
So, well, you're on, you have an action item, so you have to approve the, you need a motion to approve the minutes of December 17 as amended would be, I think, the proper motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pash.
Yes.
Vice Chair Herschel.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Commissioner, just so you know, you're up against the hour for a break.
It is just about time. I think we can do one more. Or should we break now?
It's going to be lengthy, the liaisons.
Oh, yes, excuse me, that is next. No, you're right. Okay. So without any objections, we will go to a 10-minute recess. It's 10:03 now. Please come back before 10:15. Thank you. Reset.
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it, if you're only your best when you can play more than you work, if inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's a shelter pet who wants to meet you. Meet one today. Visit theshelterpetproject.org. Adopt.
Wildfire, as everyone knows, has emerged as one of the big, major issues affecting Oregon, and for that matter, all Western states. A real actionable response that's including how do we fight fire, actively managing our forests so that we don't have the fuels out there, and how are we going to protect communities from smoke exposures? The council's really set up to have a comprehensive strategy that's based on action and based on protecting our communities.
The primary focus we, as a board, have come through with is that in researching the policies for fire management, yes, prescribed fire has its place on the landscape, but not during fire season. We, as a county, passed a proclamation that says once the state fire marshal declares fire season, it'll be nothing but full suppression, and recently took a resolution to the National Association of Counties, essentially says that they support coordination between agencies and local governments for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens regarding fire, prescribed fire, fire season, anything that affects our citizens.
This is Lily Morgan from Josephine County, and we are at the Rogue Leadership Forum today, looking at the best possible partnerships that we can come up with to fight the fire issues and the smoke issues that we're facing in southwest Oregon. So looking forward to coming up with solutions and the partnerships to get the job done so we don't face what we have the last few years with catastrophic fires and smoke that invades our communities for months to come. So this is a good opportunity, and we hope to be successful in the outcome.
Seeing so many people come together has really been exciting for me because there's a lot of expertise, there's a lot of resources, and as we attempt to do a shared stewardship approach to keeping people safe, it's really important that we get together. So my name is Murph George Jr., and I'm the forest supervisor for the Rogue River Siski National Forest. The first thing is making sure to get fires out if they're threatening life and property. The second thing that I'm going to focus in on is when it's safe to do so, to put some fire on the landscape when it's cooler and not during fire season, to reduce these same fuels that are giving us so much fits during the fire season.
Bob Horton, I'm the fire chief of Jackson County Fire District III in southern Oregon. The challenges that are facing us in terms of the mega fires and the wildfires that we've been experiencing out in this valley, particularly in the last couple of years, but across the state and across the region, incredibly concerning to us and the fire community, those in our communities in general, our constituents and our patrons are extremely concerned as they ought to be. Really, the takeaway from the work that's being done now is this is an extraordinary collaboration of dozens on dozens of interested stakeholder groups who are coming together with a common purpose. It's really an inspiring showing of humanity to not only be able to provide for a greater quality of life for our people, but to be strong stewards of our land so that our future for us and generations to come is incredibly bright.
Very pressing issue. It's bearing down on us. Fire season is approaching, and I am really interested in preventing my home and other homes in my community from being impacted by wildfire specifically from being burnt down. That's my main reason for being involved.
Quite a collaboration of folks. We're here looking for practical solutions to help us unravel some of the issues. to help us unravel some of the issues surrounding wildfires today here in the state of Oregon. And my focus really is on planning for large wildfire events in advance of their occurrence. That way, when they do occur, we can respond more appropriately to those situations.
Well, I just think it's grand if all of the people all over the state have come together today to be concerned about water. It just warms my heart because I know that they really will leave here today feeling more impressed about the water because I have told them that we're all born in water. We cannot live without it. It's our job to take care of and stop the garbage in the rivers and streams and oceans because there's life in that water and it's our job to keep it clean for them. Because we cannot live on this planet without the animal kingdom. I was in Ohio at the Ohio River with Dr. Emoto, the Japanese scientist who had proven water could heal. He and I stood on that riverbank blessing the Ohio River that they had us come to do. And I prayed that God has still kept the river good for them over there. We were taught from Berlin that prayer works. You too will remember your prayers because they work. It has nothing to do with religion or church.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities. And the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Hi there, I'm Patrick Priest, Executive Director at CIS. And I really enjoy coming every year to this conference because CIS, we are all about counties. We are owned by counties. We were formed by the AOC. This is a great occasion for us to meet everybody in one place and learn what's important to the counties all across Oregon.
It's the networking. I mean, we learn a lot about the different issues that counties deal with, but it's networking with other commissioners, getting ideas on how they handle situations that is the most helpful for me.
I love my job. It actually matters to me on a daily basis. I used to do a lot of charity. And, you know, in commissioning in Deschutes County, you can make a serious difference. Lots of things have happened since I've been in office and I feel like it's important to represent the people. I grew up in eastern Oregon.
Is it north New Jersey?
Oh, okay, that's in upper New York.
Yeah.
In New York?
Upstate New York, yeah. Okay, are we ready, Eric? Yeah, we're... Okay, back in session. Couple of side notes here. I want to thank real quick Matt Hall, the free newspapers, the Coquille Sentinel, the Murmure Point Herald, the Curry County Reporter, and the Port Orford News. I don't know how you do it all.
Those newspapers are not free. I think he gives the county complimentary copies, but we also subscribe, I think, and whatnot, so.
We do?
Yeah.
Well, thank you. You're faithful, that's what matters.
I have the headline for you for Wednesday. Curry County is reopened. How's that? Curry County is reopened.
I like it.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm processing. It's hard to find fault with that, actually. Also, we have our meeting today and I looked at the agenda and I'm thinking, I wonder if we, when I promoted this January 13th meeting back on the 4th, if we really needed this. And our items have loaded up, so it's good. I don't know where we are for the 20th though, as far as how busy that meeting might be. So Staff Jesuit, if we don't have a lot of items come in, I assume we're going to need that meeting, but I'm not sure. We also have a workshop scheduled for that day, I believe. Okay, tentative. No, it's not tentative.
I don't think it's tentative.
Great, thank you. Okay, Board, we're going to assignment of liaison board, county board commissioner positions. And my computer just went, what's going on here? What are we doing? Well, I got backup. So who wants to start off here? You know, I sent Director Rickert back in December, a general plan. Emphasis on general. We had some discussion last week on where we should be, where we could be, experiences we've had, the rationale behind mixing it up, all the rest. So where do we go? I think my recommendations are pretty close, pretty good, but I obviously need to hear from the Board. Go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
Well, as I stated in the meeting when we first brought this up, I think having relationships are extremely important. As we learned last week, and I'm not saying that that wouldn't have happened, but having that constant relationship, being able to talk to the people that I kind of hounded for a few months to get this river cleaned out. You know, those were done with relationships. And I know we have a congressman that'll want to take all the credit for that, but there were a lot more people way above his pay grade that got involved in that. And I'm not taking any credit for that at all, but I think those relationships are extremely important. So, you know, having the relationship for me, you know, on liaisons, to having the relationships that I've already built with some of these departments is important to me. You know, I'm one of those people that I like to keep things going. Once we get things started, I've got some things that I'm working on right now on the fair for private investment that, could you go to Medford and talk to the same business owner that I'm talking, corporate business owner that I'm talking to about investing millions of dollars in our fair? He might, you know, that might turn him off to a different commissioner. So it's a relationship that I've already started to build. So I think, you know, having a lot of these relationships is important to the county. We get along already and we have a direction that we're trying to go. And I disagree. I know that the assessor, excuse me, said that he likes to see, you know, things get changed around. But I respectfully disagree with that. I think having long-term relationships is extremely important to the county and that's how we get things done, is knowing what we're walking into and what to expect when you walk into a meeting, to some extent. That's my comments.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question. There's been some discussion too, do we need, and I have a strong opinion on this, but there has been some discussion and underlining if we need liaison positions with the elected officials. Part of the concern here has been that department managers and elected officials get put in the same pot. And, you know, people that have worked hard to get elected, to put themselves out there for the public, they're a little different than a department manager. And to the extent that's true, it's been expressed to me and I think to other members of this Board, that sometimes, especially under the Creek management or county management position or Director of County Operations position, that they felt disrespected at times. My mom's speaking for them, but I know I've felt that. So the question to the Board before we move on, or however you want to proceed, would be, do we even need that for elected positions? And is it a benefit to the county, back to the team? Similar to what you just communicated, Commissioner Pash, back to building those relationships. It's not an oversight necessarily. It's not an authoritative deal. It's like, again, the emphasis on this being a small county. How do we team up? How do we get the most production, the most responsibility is what we have to do? How do we build consensus? How do we bring people together? And we have to show that. So, again, the question, do we need from elected officials, Commissioner liaison positions? I'll go to you first.
I would say no. I don't think so. I know that they know that they can come to the Board at any time. You know, I think we've heard from our sheriff that says, you know, you can appoint one to me, but I, you know, he is an elected official and I think those elected officials need to be able to come to any commissioner at any time. So I'm in favor of not having elected officials have a direct liaison. And being the new guy, if I can just keep going a little bit, not knowing how you've done this in the past. So like, we have two years now before there's another election. So, and again, I have not been here, so I would think that, so I step into Sue Gold's spot. I would think if you guys, having had your liaisons for the years you've been in here, if you would want to do one, take one of hers, you know, it's kind of, I'm a big seniority guy. Thirty years with UPS, it's about seniority. If you guys would want one of hers, then you could take it, take it and give it to me. And, but unless you want things to change from 2020, I don't think we should. That's my personal opinion. So, does that make any sense?
Certainly, but we didn't, we actually didn't change a lot, I don't think, from 2020. Go ahead, Commissioner Pash.
I, getting back to the elected positions, I really don't see a need for that either. I mean, we have no sway over another elected person's office. I can't go over and tell the clerk what to do or, you know, assessor, our treasurer, that's as we talked in depth about yesterday. We have no sway over their offices. We can make recommendations, but I think as a Board, if we need to know something about what the assessor is doing, we ask the assessor to attend a meeting, put it on an ARS, and he comes in and talks to us. So I don't know that there's anything to gain by them having a liaison as an elected official. But I do, I do want to say strong on the relationships. You know, we've got some things that are also gone. The sheriff's gone, of course, emergency services is gone because the sheriff took that back. So we have no sway over emergency services anymore. You know. The only other one on here that I see, because I am, just so you know, I am a pilot and I have the highest license you can get for a pilot, of highest clearances you can get for a pilot. So I don't have any more sway with aviation boards or anything, but having that connection, that's one of the reasons I chose airports and aviation. I understand approaches, I understand instruments, you know, instrument approaches, NDB approaches, all those kind of things. I understand what it takes to have an airport and those kind of conversations. Being a veteran, I, of course, you know, wanted to be involved in veterans' services. The fair, I've been extremely involved in. Finance in the treasurer's office, for me, is extremely important. You know, having the relationship that I have already built with the finance department, I think we have a very good relationship. And the treasurer, I look forward to working with the treasurer. But that one is not cut in stone. I don't know him, I don't have a relationship. I will say for investment though, if he was going to, you know, get into investments and those kind of things from an oversight, I would like to be heavily involved in the oversight of that, like the committee that we talked about. Road Department, Mr. Christiansen, I'm sorry.
Could you go back to the finance? Are you going to propose a committee and perhaps, I mean, I assume you were in favor of that? An advisory committee to the treasurer?
For the treasurer, yes, you said finance. For the treasurer's office.
Excuse me, yes, I did say finance, I'm sorry. For the treasurer's office, which you mentioned yesterday, which I thought was interesting. So I'm just interrupting you to understand if you feel like that's something you want to kind of promote and push forward and perhaps even develop a committee and bring it before the Board.
Well...
I think it's a good idea. The more I think about it, at least initially, that is my opinion.
What I think our duty is as commissioners is to make sure our treasurer is following the laws and following what the previous Board has already outlined for his investment strategy and those kind of things. If we're going to change a treasurer's investment strategy, this Board can do it. But I think it takes an oversight committee to oversee, you know, making, I mean, we're giving him the keys to the county, basically, to have oversight of that and some reporting of that, anything we can do. Again, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to micromanage his office. It's not, I don't believe that's our job, my job. But to have oversight of it, and again, with OpenGov, I think a lot of those questions will be answered because OpenGov's transparency that we will all have on a daily basis will answer any questions that we have and would bring any red flags or red herrings to the forefront just by knowing what you're looking for. So I don't, again, this is something that I'd like to get a little bit farther down the road with OpenGov to see. But if it doesn't, if it doesn't give us what we're looking for as far as that kind of question, then we might want to look into having some kind of a committee to oversee it. Again, not micromanaging, but to have it, just eyes, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Good. Okay, so you're, at least in a general sense, you're planning to come back at some point and possibly give that advisory committee with the number of people it would serve and the oversight, the responsibilities, all the above. I think that would be a good, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the thing with it, and again, I would just like to let the Board know, I mean, I think we need to let OpenGov get fully up and running. And let's see if all of our questions are answered from that. And then, you know, we can get together in a workshop and talk about what it produces. Director Rickert can also be involved in that process as well and making sure that, you know, he's satisfied with what he's seeing for the finance department and for the director's position. If I could though, going down, Road Department, Mr. Christiansen and I have a great relationship. And I know, Mr. Herzog, you do, you know him well as also on a personal level, but I have a great relationship with him. I also have a good relationship with our code enforcement officer. I understand a lot of the facets of building. I've built probably 250,000 square feet under roof in my life. So I understand a lot of the codes. I understand a lot of the processes for those kind of things. So if I were going to ask to, you know, because I'm actually going to be losing three, I think, the clerk, the sheriff, and emergency services, I would like to continue my relationship with code enforcement, with our code enforcement officer. And parks is something that I might be interested in as well, but I know that our parks coordinator reached out to you. And parks is something that I might be interested in as well, but I know that our parks coordinator reached out to you and you spent some time with him the other day. And I think that was very positive. So that's where I am with liaison assignments and my choices.
Did you do any crossing and adding or yet?
No, I haven't. Like I said earlier, I kind of, you know, you guys, if, you know, you pick who you want and I'll, I'll take.
Well, that's a good spirit. So we'll just, we'll just load you up with everything.
I think the person to check with the crossing add is, I'm assuming Brad is taking notes on this.
I'm trying.
Good.
Here's one definite, if I understood the board correctly, straighten me out if I'm not presuming right. So off of John Herzog, I have crossed off the treasurer and the assessor. I'm gonna kind of go slow here.
Oh, you're on the new one that you, you produced, not the old one, okay. I was just looking, I'm like, whatever.
Yeah, let's, let's stay with that if we can, it's probably.
You almost have to look at them both.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think stay with the 2020, and then you guys.
Make changes to the 2020?
Mm-hmm, that, that would be, you know, my recommendation, because I, but, I mean, you don't have to.
Well, it seems like that's where, anyway, that, that also, that makes sense.
So here's where I'm at, we cross off Commissioner Pash clerk and district attorney, is that right? We move finance from Herzog to. Okay, so you want to go back to 2020?
I think.
I'd have to start all over then, somewhat.
I don't know if you would or not, it's, that's where you started anyway.
I'd basically be keeping what I have, and my recommendation, or my, my want would be, to have code enforcement brought over to me because I'll be losing the clerk, the county sheriff, and emergency services. So I would be down to five, so by bringing code enforcement over, that would give me six.
Question for Commissioner Pash, earlier you had talked about the airport, because John Herzog's in Brookings, it might be easier for him to make. How did you, how do you feel about that one too?
Well, he, he is taking over for the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority.
Very good, okay.
But that's a separate, that's a, that's a committee that he's on, instead of a liaison.
Very good. Well, do we?
So you want to do those again, Mr. Pash?
For me, it would be airports, veterans, the fair, finance, road department, and code enforcement. And, and the treasurer, I would like to be, but if someone wants that, because I don't have a relationship with that person yet.
That's an elected position.
Oh, that's, you're right, so we're, I'm losing four then, you're right.
So given to, one more time would be appreciated, I think I'm with you.
Airports, veterans, fair, 4H, finance, road department, and code enforcement.
So I, I come up with six?
Yes.
You know, I, I would like to see, but I, but I'm fifty-fifty either way. Before we, we confirm road department, let's see where we are with Commissioner Herzog.
I'm looking at Curry Public Transit Facilities and I, I haven't, I gotta go meet somebody there, I haven't done that yet. So what, where is that?
Good, that's our transit district.
Yeah.
And the board is actually the transit district, and then we have a contract for services with Curry Public Transit.
And that is like the senior center in Brookings?
Yeah, it's, well, it's, I think their headquarters may be down by the airport. Yep.
Our, this airport?
Yep.
Okay.
Right down Moore Street.
Okay, I need to go see them.
And I can email you Kathy Bernhardt's email.
Okay.
And she's, she's the manager of the transit district, and yeah, having a meeting with her would, would be a good start.
Okay, we're getting closer. So right now, we'll come back to you in a minute, but I think we're fairly close. Herzog, Curry Public Transit, facilities maintenance, did you catch that?
Yes, I've, I've met with Chet and had a tour, and boy, yesterday, it was, it was no bueno.
With the rain.
Everywhere I went to talk to folks, I was finding leaks and, is it okay to say that? I think Brad's gonna address that later, but, so, yeah, in my previous job, I was a apartment manager, maintenance, and all around. So I, you know, anyway, I got some history with maintenance and building, so.
Good.
I'm, I'm good with that. District attorney is an elected official, so.
Yep. And the big one.
Oh, Commissioner's office, I gotta be a liaison to you too? No, do you mean like to JJ or, yeah, okay.
County council.
County council, that's a tough one.
I've got you down for parks.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I like, yeah, that, that kind of, I think Anthony assumed that, and I was fine with that. And we, I actually went and saw Lobster Creek, which is, I'd never, I've lived here for fifty-four years and never seen Lobster Creek campground. It was absolutely spectacular, so, yeah, I, I, I like parks, unless you want it.
No, I, I originally put you on that. So then, I also had juvenile, but let's, Commissioner Pash, you can interrupt anytime you want, but that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, if you did juvenile.
I, I can.
Six, okay.
History with juvenile delinquents, so.
Yeah, I heard the story you, shall I tell everybody?
No.
So.
For one, is that the?
Boys, Community Development, which is all planning and building, surveyor, IT, public health, economic development. So that would be one, two, three, four. I could keep juvenile. But I, I, that's just a very important department, and I think you would be very good at that as well. Mr. Pash, do you want to weigh in there?
No, I'm, I'm, that's, I think more for you two to decide than me.
If I could, I mean.
Please. I've got all the kids I want at my ranch on Friday afternoon.
If I, if I'm not mistaken, and Brad, you can jump in anytime you want, but I think if, if Commissioner Herzog is getting parks and also facilities maintenance, if I'm not mistaken, the juvenile department sometimes has kids who need stuff to do.
Connections.
And they work with parks and facilities maintenance, so there might be some good dovetailing if, if those are all under one guy who knows.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Chet was sharing that with me, that.
All right.
He, we, I actually met a young man while we were doing our tour, that he said is very good worker, so yeah, I got you.
Brad, does that fit in with how you understand those departments work together?
They, they all work closely together at times, so that is a good, good idea.
So if we move road to you, that would probably, I think we'd be good to keep that with Commissioner Pash.
I agree.
If you're okay?
Yeah, oh yeah.
So we have agreement there? I get the sense we're, we're, we're there, guys. Director Rickert, do you have anything?
No, but if I could, just read them off to clarify it, make sure I have it all right. Commissioner Boyce, be liaison to community development, economic development, public health, and information technology, and the surveyor.
Well, we, we don't have a surveyor though, or?
Our, our surveyor's a contract position.
Okay.
It's allowed by law.
Still may require some attention.
Yeah.
Well, it's also in the community development realm, so.
It is part, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Herzog, I have you down for juvenile. Curry Public Transit Facilities, Maintenance, Commissioner's Office, Council, and Parks.
And juvenile?
Yep.
You said that.
Oh, you did, was that at the top, excuse me?
And Commissioner Pash, airports and aviation, veteran services, fair, finance, and HR, and road department.
And code enforcement.
And code enforcement, yes.
Just one little side note, I guess it's no surprise, I'm gonna keep working with veterans every spare minute I got. And, but I think you'll agree that that hasn't been any interference with you.
No.
And so I think that important subject department, however you want to characterize it, is gonna be well represented. Why don't we take separate motions on that, gentlemen, and should we, and before we forget, get, get approval on that? Or do we, I assume we want a motion?
Oh, I see, so you're going liaison for departments first, and then you want to go liaisons for committees and boards second, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that would be my preference.
As long as we get the business done, that's okay with me, so.
We can just do one motion.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, and we have department assignments for liaisons for the Curry County Commissioners, as stated by Director of Operations, Rickert.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Staff Jesuit, roll call please.
Commissioner Pash.
Aye.
Vice Sheriff, Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
So now, board, we are going to the committees and boards, and let's start with you, Commissioner Herzog. You want to?
Are we gonna start with the same as we did with?
On 2020?
Yeah, and.
We sure can, yeah.
So all I have right now is that Border Coast Regional Airport Authority is under, or Commissioner Herzog is the liaison for.
So I'll just read off, we'll start at the top with that Boyce guy. Association of VLM in ONC Counties, how do you say this? I'm moving up in the board, eighteen different counties. That's probably the most important board I serve on, I believe. Association of Oregon Counties Legislative Committee, Association of Oregon Counties District Four Board Chairman. Cus-Curry doesn't, Douglas Business Development, that's a big one. Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association, I'm missing a meeting as we speak. Advanced Healthcare, and I'm, I'm interested in that because of the, the public health aspect, and I've spent a lot of time over the four years on both those boards, including AllCare. So I'd like to have AllCare, but let's see how, how this all stacks up. Commissioner Pash, Oregon Coast Community Action. I might need to put that under myself or Commissioner Herzog, I don't know. We really need representation on there, and there's been, there's been some issues we don't need to go into today. No fault of anyone here, I don't think. South Coast Business Employment Corporation, very happy to have you, your attention to that. Court-appointed special advocates, that requires some time, and whoever takes that, go ahead.
I'd actually like to move away from that, I've had, I've had some issues with the CASA program. Some things that were said to my wife that were pretty insightful.
Not insightful.
Well, right. Bad choice of word, yeah.
It's okay.
Yes, but anyway, it's, it's something that I'd, I'd, I'll leave it at that. I'd like to maybe move away from that one.
Do you agree that it's?
And having juvenile, that would be a good fit as well.
Okay, we'll just leave it at that if you're okay with that.
Yes, sir.
So Director Rickert, we are moving CASA to Commissioner Herzog?
Yes.
Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, Commissioner Pash?
I've got a good relationship there, and Mr. Milliman and I do well there too.
I really miss, no, you're talking about SWAC.
I'm sorry, SWAC, you got the wrong one, yeah.
So Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, are they meeting with video nowadays?
We are, but we still try and meet at the Blue Room, but yeah, we are doing video as well.
Man, I really miss that one, so you're, you're fully committed to that and happy to stay with that one? That's really, they need a lot of leadership there and support, it's a great, great bunch of people. Just so the public knows, that's, all three, all four law enforcement departments are represented there. We usually have a judge, we have medical people there.
State police.
State, well, yeah, actually, it's five law enforcement, county state police, good, good, yes.
Juvenile's there, everyone's there.
Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, I served there two, three years, and, boy, that's important too, with all of the Oregon Department of Transportation issues and battling for funding, that's a big board. It represents all of Douglas, Cus, and Curry County, so are you meeting video on that one as well?
Yes, we just had a meeting three days ago.
Good, okay. So, let's stay here for just a second. Oregon Coast Community Action, I listen into most of their meetings, that's not, that's not accurate, some of their meetings. And they're, I, I, I think I can reach out and, for, at least temporary right now, I want to put that on my list.
What's the rub with them, with me? Is there, you mentioned something.
You know, I, I never researched that, and I did tell the board that I would like to do that, because I didn't understand. And so I could, I could be next to, I don't know, my, it's.
That's the one they invited me to be on their board, even changed their schedule so I could be on their board. And then the night I was supposed, the day I was supposed to head up there, they emailed me and said, you know, we've had a change of thought, we don't want you on our board.
Okay.
So I know.
And that's the Oregon Coast Community Action?
Yeah, they're, they're the.
To help out with electric payments and?
They were the biggest force behind the Brookings Head Start, one point six million dollar project. And so I know a lot of the people on there, and I'd like, I'd like the board's approval to just see if I can participate. I'm not looking to, for any kind of debate or anything, but.
I'm fine with.
Yeah.
I would be too.
I, you know, I'm saying publicly, I don't know what happened, I, I don't think you did any. You and I've had our issues, but I don't think you did anything wrong there, so I will not be bashful about defending Curry County on that. But it is a very good organization, so, okay, we have, we have agreement on that?
You're gonna move that one to you, yes.
Yeah.
And you said you wanted AllCare from me?
Yeah, but I'm kind of loading up here, and AllCare usually meets in Brookings.
Okay.
So that might be good for you, and that's, what we have, John, we have two community care organizations. And Curry County's really in a good, good position.
Curry Health and AllCare?
Yes, Advanced and, and AllCare. AllCare is based in Grants Pass, that's Josh and Sam Engel, Josh Bullock. And so Curry County's kind of fortunate because with Advanced Health in Cus Bay, and I'm on that board, the Citizens Advisory Board, we're, we're, I'm repeating myself, sorry, but we're in a good position because there's almost a little bit of competition for Curry County because of Grants Pass and Cus Bay. And the more I think about it, I think that would be a good fit for you to do that, and I would encourage you to make all the meetings you possibly can. And we'll get you introduced to Josh and Sam, and also Cameron McVeigh serves on that board.
Okay, yeah, I know Cam.
Cameron's really good people, and they feed you good too.
Okay.
So, they, especially for the medical issues, just really, really helpful. AllCare's good. So where did I leave off? We were at the Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, I'm confident we're doing good there, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, good. Now CASA, we moved to Commissioner Herzog. South Coast Business Employment Corporation, can't say enough good about them. Move Oregon, at least for now, we moved Oregon Coast Community Action to Boyce. So that leaves Commissioner Herzog with AllCare, Ambulance Service Area Advisory, Border Coast Regional Airport. But we move, no, you're, you're definitely on that board, correct?
No, I think Chris is.
No, you're on the, that's the Border Coast.
Yeah, it is a little confusing, definitely a little confusing.
That's a committee meeting is what it is, they basically talk about the airport down in South County.
Okay.
And, and their plans for anything to do with that, and they don't deal with a lot of the aviation issue, they deal more with the local.
All right.
And that's mainly in Crescent City or something?
Yeah, it's a Crescent City meeting and their.
Their new hang, their new?
Beautiful facility.
Judge Beaman, is it okay if I acknowledge you are in our audience?
Too late.
Can't sneak in.
Nobody will know if the internet's down, I think, or at least I can't get a phone here.
Oh. Are you, are you looking for Phil or?
What?
Are you looking for Phil?
Yeah, are you here, are you here looking for IT services or commissioners?
No, I was watching the meeting, and I, I'm across the street.
The live feed went down?
Welcome.
We are very glad to have you here, and so do we have a liaison position for the magistrate of the state?
No.
I didn't mean to embarrass you, but I do try and acknowledge people when they come in, and we appreciate you being here, and sorry about the internet, Judge. I didn't mean to embarrass you, but I do try and acknowledge people when they come in, and we appreciate you being here, and sorry about the internet, Judge.
Yeah.
Let's see, so. Boy.
We were at Cus-Curry Hazardous Waste Council.
Yes, and solid waste. Okay, then we get to Regional Solutions, and that's, I'm on with the governor's office all the time. I've not spoke to the governor personally. I'd like to say that I have, but no, I haven't, hasn't been a need, but on the Regional Solutions. I've just really worked to build relationships there, I'd like to go back on that. And.
You can have it.
And I'd like you to learn at any rate what that is, because it's really important to our little county, well, shoot, all counties. So are we going too fast, Director Rickert, how are we doing here?
I have a few holes, but solid waste recycling and Cus-Curry Hazardous Waste Council, I assume those are staying with Commissioner Herzog.
And those are two separate councils?
Yes.
Or boards, okay.
And with the six department liaison assignments that you have, Commissioner, and then these boards and committees. I think that's, that's probably enough for your first few months.
What'll I do on Tuesday? No, just, just a joke.
Well, we'll, we'll think of something.
Pardon me.
Okay. So let's see what you got, we might interrupt you if we are confused or if we missed something, Director Rickert, thank you.
What I show for Chair Boyce is he is keeping everything that he had for 2020 and adding Oregon Coast Community Action and Regional Solutions.
Wow, good job. That, that's my notes.
Okay. For Commissioner Herzog. I have court-appointed special advocates, All Care, Ambulance Service Area Advisory, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, Cus-Curry Hazardous Waste Council, Solid Waste and Recycling, and Curry Board of Property Tax Appeals.
That's my, that's my notes.
Commissioner Pash. South Coast Business Employment Corp. Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, Southwest Area Commission on Transportation. And that's it.
That's a little.
I lost two.
A little light?
Yeah.
What are you trying to say, I'm getting lazy?
If you would like one of my six.
Uh, I would. Property Tax Appeals?
Sure. It's up to you.
Okay, I'll do that.
So that would give you five.
Four.
It'd be five, five, and you'd have six, five and four.
Actually, I'm gonna have eight, but because I've been here four years, I have no excuses not to be productive. You agree, no, never mind. So that, the Board of Property Tax Appeals requires some training. And, and you're ready for that, and I think you, I think you'd be a good contributor. Any, any questions, any more discussion? Are we, are we there?
I think we're there.
We better read it off one more time, please.
Okay. Chair Boyce will keep all of his 2020 assignments and add Oregon Coast Community Action and Regional Solutions. Vice Chair Herzog will have court-appointed special advocates, All Care, Ambulance Service Area Advisory, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, Cus-Curry Hazardous Waste Council, Solid Waste, and that's it. And Commissioner Pash will have South Coast Business Employment Corp., Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, and Curry Board of Property Tax Appeal.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Staff Jesuit, roll call, please.
Mr. Pash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog.
Yes.
Chair Boyce.
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Well, guys, I don't know if I can get, my internet is doing some funny things, too, so bear with me one second. I'll see if I can get my information back up here. There we go.
My internet's working.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine just come back on. Your honor, was it the live stream of our meeting is what went down, but you could still do email and some other stuff? Okay.
We're, we're on a different system, but I think.
It's the live stream, okay. And I think for us, historically, that's been some type of a charter issue, some type of issue with our connection for them.
I think it's a storm.
Yeah.
In and out.
Okay.
Ours has been in and out all day.
All right. So, next item is, I put on the agenda, Discussion Anti-Violation and Freedom to Assemble, Future Resolution Proposal Discussion with the Board.
You had Langlois.
Langlois turns.
Is it next? God, I'm jumping around, I'm leapfrogging here, huh?
C is, yeah.
Oh, I'm having fun with this one. I sent Staff Jesuit a picture of the 1981 100-year Agnes Celebration, the same year my grandfather was born in Langlos, and went on to raise 12 kids, you've read the information, I could read it real quick.
You mean 1881?
What'd I say, 1981? 1881 to 1981, my mom gave me, and I don't have it, but we'll bring it between now and as we organize, but she brought me a big catalog, I don't know, a year ago, and it had all the pictures of the Langlos Parade. And one I remember distinctly was Bill Bradbury and his family, his girls were only like six years old and four years old, and it was just incredible, and some other people I recognized, and. So, you know, I, I don't know if we'll be able to pull this off. I know there's a lot of interest. But it depends on how the pandemic goes, and so I remain very optimistic, but I'm also a realist. And we've, the weekend of August 14th and 15th, Agnes will officially turn 140. Fascinating little community. The biggest news, of course, is we have two co-grandmarshals, and that is my first cousin, Bev Clarno, who just left Secretary of State, she's a Republican. She was born in Langlos, part of the whole family, and then the Bill Bradbury family, who's a Democrat, he's a former Secretary of State, I've been friends with him forever. And they're just anxious to come and be co-supporters and be a wonderful tribute to both of them. And I, you know, the early discussion is to have a parade, you know, maybe some different meals and, and other things that can greet the, the 140-year, and so I'd like the Board to just give me general approval on that, and hopefully within a month or so, we'll start planning and, or sooner, and come back to the Board with some additional information. And by the way, yeah, doesn't matter how you pronounce it, nobody has the perfect pronunciation. Langlois or Langlos or whatever, you know, so, yeah. Any discussion, any questions, guys?
You're, you're asking to have a celebration in Langlois on August 14th and 15th of 2021?
Yeah, I don't really think this should be an action item because I, I, just a general consensus that you'd like to participate or you're okay. Basic, I'm asking, okay, is if, if I pursue this and as a county commissioner and come back to you later and just give you, you know, periodic updates on, on how it's progressing, assuming it does.
I support it.
I don't know if you even need our, you know, our approval for that, but I'd support that as well.
We might need some, a little bit of funding from visitor promotion, I doubt it, but we'll see how that goes. We haven't got that far. I didn't mean to break that to you late here. But I, I, I do wanna.
But you're not asking for any money today?
No.
Okay.
No, we're not that far, and, and I don't know what that, what those funds would be targeted for at this point, anyway. So we have consensus?
Yes.
Thank you. So let's leapfrog to the next one. No, not leap, not leapfrog to the next one, on Agenda Item 7, 7D. So with all we have going on in our country, tremendous division, a lot of anger out there. Where's Curry County on, on an anti-violence resolution possibly at some point in time? Do we draw attention that we don't want to draw? Do we want to really promote the Bill of Rights as far as people responsibly and peacefully assembling? Is there a way we can bring our county together, our citizens together? What would it mean to other counties? What would it mean to our law enforcement? I mean, it's a vast thing, do we teach our kids, you know, the freedom of speech? And, you know, you saw my notes in here about the, that, I mean, you see it daily with the, the national suppression by the big tech companies, even other countries, other democracies are speaking out. And it's, it's compounding the problem, I think, and dividing America. And, you know, I just wanted to start the conversation here and say, guys, people, folks, where are we? And it might be very important that we just send a message out, we support our law enforcement, we support free assemble, we do not want any violence here. Are other counties doing this? They're not jumping. Can Curry County be first? That's not my basis or objective. But it doesn't hurt for the county to lead a little bit. It doesn't hurt to let people know, I've already got some emails of support and some questions, clarifications. I can't give any clarification, though, at this point, until I see what the Board would like to do, and if they would like to do. So I'd really appreciate a discussion. Maybe asking you to go out on a limb just a little bit. But is there a way that we can bring our people together? And do we have that responsibility? And could we be successful? Thank you.
You guys are both looking at me.
I'm looking at anybody that wants to, like I said, go out on a limb. You know, what can we teach our kids? I mean, I don't need to, if there's no interest or no discussion or apprehension, maybe you could explain what that, if I'm sensing the reluctance, what would that be? Do we want Curry County to, to basically tell the people, we don't want, we absolutely don't want any violence here? In my program, I say, you know, violence is almost never the answer unless you're defending your family and your property and your home, and you have no other options, or police, certainly the military. You know, just teaching our kids the Bill of Rights, I, I don't know personally, I don't know what's more important than that. Go ahead, Commissioner Pash, thank you.
Well, I just. To see what's happened, especially what happened last week, actually all through last, last summer with the demonstrations. As long as people want to gather and demonstrate and keep their hands in their pockets, and I am 100% in favor of gathering for a voice for your constitutional rights. The minute you raise your hand, you're violating the law. I think, you know, is this a good discussion? Yes, it is, but I think our sheriff has made it very clear to the county where he stands, he is the law enforcement voice for this county. He's made it very clear to the county where he stands, what he'll tolerate and what he won't tolerate. And I stand with him on that, I think this board has stood with him on that in the past. So, I mean, to have this as a conversation item, yes, to have it, excuse me, as an action item, I don't know if we need to go to that level, I think just by us speaking it right now is an affirmation to the county that we agree that we won't stand for this and, and we support our sheriff 100%. And I think that speaks more, I think, to the county than anything, is that this board will support our sheriff's department and what he's conveyed to this board, his intentions for the county, how he will police this county, and that we back him 100% in his actions is, is the biggest statement as we can make.
I'm in agreement with that, and, you know, living in Brookings, we did have quite a few weekends where there was folks out on both sides of the street, because the Democrats and the Republicans, and there was parades and, and driving around, and it was all peace, peaceful that I know of. Horn honking, and, and we all have to get along, and it's, and violence is not the answer, and so. And I'm in agreement with, you know, supporting our sheriffs and city police, state police, those in authority, judges, and everyone else, so.
Well, thank you both commissioners, thanks for bringing up, and I was gonna do that, you know, we have four law enforcement entities in this county, and thank goodness they, I think, work very well together, I certainly saw that during the 2017 and 2018 Chetco Bar and Klondike Fires and other, you know, the highway collapse and floods, and, you know, we're just very, very fortunate. One thing I want to mention, you mentioned Brookings, Commissioner Herzog, and what happened down there, it was close to violence, though. There was, there was the, the notion that somebody was coming to Curry County in buses, you know, I don't think the sheriff panicked on that for a second, but there was some concern that if that should take place, were they coming through Cus County and then into Curry County? Saw that was handled fine, in my opinion. And, but there was one small business in Brookings that was basically accosted and intimidated greatly, because they didn't have a particular sign in their window. It wouldn't have put Republican-Democrat thing, it was a, a freedom of speech group versus anti-freedom of speech group that were in Curry County, and I don't even know if they're Curry County residents. We never really responded to that, but Boyce sure gave me a yellow blinking light, thus, and then, as you referenced, and I also referenced, Commissioner Pash, what happened in Washington DC, what happened in Salem two weeks ago? You know, some of those people I support, but we do not support any, like you said, once your hands come out of your pocket, you know, the intensity goes up, and at a county level, can we simply say, be on guard, be careful? What happened to our nation's capital is just absolutely crushing, and the message that sends to the generation behind, generations behind us, it's gonna take us years and years to recover from that. So I respect the sheriff very much, but we have a responsibility, too, and so that's why I brought this up. Referenced this today, and, you know, the, the Bill of Rights. If we are able to focus on that or do our part to help others focus on that, I think, I think it can really bear some fruit. Can we bring the odds down of violence, even if it's just slight, slightly diminishing those odds? I think we can, but I may not be the, the, the best and ultimate word on that, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, I'd also like to say that, you know, it doesn't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, I think we all have, our press greatly contributes to fueling the fire, Democrats have their channels and social media, the Republicans have their channels and social media, and I think they both consistently, at times, help to fuel those fires. I'd like to say that I think our media here is, for the most part, very fair. Very concise in reporting what they hear and see and not ad-libbing, which I think is the duty of the media, and I appreciate that from our media. And, you know, I, I think that, that's, that's something that Curry County has, that we don't get a lot of outside sources misinterpreting or misconstruing. that we don't get a lot of outside sources misinterpreting or misconstruing our intent. So I, I, I do appreciate our media and I, I appreciate the old fashioned reporting versus adding bylines to your own thoughts of what it might have meant.
And that's number two in the First Amendment, the five, the five freedoms, freedom of the press. And so they need that support. They need that encouragement, even if they charge us for the newspapers, certainly, and they should. And I think, I'm not sure if you do or not, but support what I'm asking for is further discussion on this. I'm asking for, again, to go out on a limb and, and think how we might be able to do something very, very cautious, yet productive, meaningful, impactful, educational. I'm not trying to draw a line in the sand and say, people don't come here and raise heck, but, uh, I do feel like that's one of my personal responsibilities and public safety is our number one responsibility bar none. So that's what I'm looking for and would appreciate that. Commissioner Pash?
How about something to the effect that this board fully supports our law enforcement agencies, the justice system of this county? And we will do all that is necessary to protect the citizens of this county and all those who serve in it.
I think that's good and I think it's one component, but I don't want to send the message out there. You come to Curry County, by dang, you're going to deal with our law enforcement. I'm trying to, I'm trying to slow things down or settle things down just a little bit and say, as a people, as a citizenry, as a collective body, yeah, we got law enforcement here, we got judicial over here, we've got schools here, we've got restaurants here. I mean, it's, it's a collective thing. It's just not saying, uh, it's all the responsibility of our law enforcement, but yet I agree with you, that needs reinforced. Thank you. I want something a little more. So do you want me to bring it back later or do you want to put some thought on, into it? Do we need to, these are people you would like us to contact for support, additional insight, even wisdom? It's, it shouldn't be, I guess initially, generally I'm thinking it shouldn't be a big issue. It shouldn't be a big question. It should be, wow, how can we not get behind an anti-violence resolution? I guess that's where I'm at.
I, I think it was an item that you brought up. So if you want to massage it and put what your intent is for it on there and bring it back, that might be the best way to go.
Yeah, but I don't want to spend the time unless I really feel like the board is willing to go out on that limb and be integrally involved in what, what the meeting is and what the, what the opportunities are, even the responsibilities. So no, I don't want to spend any more time unless, if it's just going to get the same discussion that, do we really need to do this? And if I'm misinterpreting, I apologize, but I, I see it as incredibly important. And I, but I could be, I could be out there. John?
So, you know, I read the discussion item, anti-violence and, excuse me, freedom to assemble, resolution proposal. I'm all for that. And so, you know, take me to where, I mean, does this get, it's a resolution, so we all three sign it? And then, um, is it on a billboard or, or is it, um, do you know what I mean? Does it, do we, um, move this forward through media, through newspaper, um, radio ads? Or, you know, I, I think everybody in Curry County, the majority are against, are, are for, they're against violence. They're for anti-violence and freedom to assemble resolution, you know, that, that anti-violence and freedom. So can you, can you help me to figure out by, by doing a resolution, what that, where it goes from there?
Well, I don't, I, I think it's a good question and a good point. I'm not, I'm not recommending or promoting, uh, you know, spending any money or, or advertising a press release for the time being would be adequate. I think just having somewhat of a position from the County Board of Commissioners that say, hey, we have some, some legitimate concerns and we want to respond to it. We want to remind the people, local and outside the county, that this is, this is, that this is where we could and should be going. Again, this is what we want to teach our children. And, um, I think a press release for the, for initially would be all that would, would be needed. But it would need to have, I think, full board support and approval before it would be any, again, any need to spend any time on it.
You know, I'm all, if I can speak again.
Certainly.
It was good just, you know, looking earlier in the week, um, at the Bill of Rights and I even brought the question to, uh, Commissioner Pash and, and to JJ in the, in the office there, you know, no quartering of soldiers. And I, you know, so we found out that that just meant housing is, housing a soldier. So it's always good and I probably knew that at one time back when I was, uh, so looking at all this stuff and bringing up the Bill of Rights and, and the Declaration of Independence is always good. History, um, is, is great. So I'm in, I'm in favor of a resolution, um, and, and seeing this move forward, so.
Well, I didn't mean to give everybody a civics lesson, but I agree with you, you know, being reminded once in a while, it's good to renew, revitalize. So Commissioner Pash?
I have the Bill of Rights hanging on the wall in my dining room. So if we were to do something that highlighted that with the press, I would have no problem with it. You know, Curry County fully supports the Bill of Rights and have it there. Like you said, let our kids read that.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. Let kids know this is what America is built on.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. It was a tough sell, but I think we got, we got where I was hoping we would get, uh, so.
I don't think it was a tough sell for me. It was just how, you know, what we were going to say is what it was.
Okay, but I'm not, I'm not real clear. I don't want to speak for the police departments. I want to engage them if we can. I'm not saying if I, I might have misunderstood you there, but I think including them, us, we don't need their permission to support them. But if they wanted to be involved in this, or let's just keep it simple for now.
Yeah.
And do a resolution, uh, have staff put a little work into this and, uh, maybe I can get something back for the 20th. We'll see what happens. They've got quite a load they're carrying right now and I'll help them. You notice underlined, uh, speak out against all violence. So anything else on this? So it's an action item. Should we just, do we have a consensus to bring something back to the board? I think that's adequate for now. We have agreement on that. Thank you all. Now, uh, are we?
To E, which is mine. It's fair board.
Okay, that's, we added, yeah.
So we were going to do that last one so we could do it after.
Right, and that's what I was going to say, but I wanted to talk about a couple of things on it. So just give me a little, a few minutes on that and then we can move on to the next.
Do you want to switch it with item F or just go ahead now?
Just go ahead now.
Okay.
Just for the board, um, you know, we have, we have, uh, three vacancies, uh, on the, on the fair board now. Two of them expired in December, uh, I'm sorry, the vacancies will expire in 2023. And then there was a resignation, um, of one of the vacancies. So we have received five applications. And as we previously stated during lunch, if we could, um, look at those five applications, give it for your consideration. And then when we come from there, what I'd like to do is hopefully be able to do our voting process as we do, uh, the sticky tabs or however we do it, putting three names on a list. And hopefully we can come to a consensus. And I would also like to have a first and second alternate because we can always get resignations. We might have someone get sick or was going to be gone for several months. So I'd like to also offer the board, uh, fair board, um, some alternates. So I'd actually like to place a one through five on there if that's possible for the board to do. Place the three that'll seat and then two alternates, one and two. So that's for your consideration during lunch and then we'll bring it back, uh, after lunch when, however, the chair decides to, to organize the meeting after lunch. We can do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Pash. Council Huddle? That should just take a couple of minutes. No, it's going to take more than that.
20 minutes probably, yeah.
To vote, you think? Yeah, I might.
Five people.
It, it very well could. So we have a one o'clock, um, executive session, so.
We do?
That's what one of our directors just told me in the hallway. Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, right after lunch.
This is on the, um, labor negotiations?
Yeah.
So, but we don't have to be real precise on time to that, do we?
On that one, we do.
Okay, so why don't we do this? Why don't we? We might be able to take lunch 11:30 to 12:30 or 11:45? To 12:45?
Well, this next one that I've got isn't going to take long, but we've got all the director's reports and all that. So we could just, after executive session, we could just re, you know, come back into regular session and talk about the, the fair board.
So that way we can stay, stay to schedule?
Yes.
Okay. So you are on the next one, the noise ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So what I have for you is, um, I posted it on the packet. I also wanted to give you all a copy of what I have. For you. Oops, I'm sorry, all three of those. And what these are is, um, I spoke with Council Huddle on this the other day and he offered me one he did for Medford. Those are all yours, yes. All three of those are yours. That's the next one for Mr. Herzog. This is one for Council Huddle.
I've never given you this thick a reading.
It's not really that thick. Uh, and then I will have one for JJ as well. These are just three examples of, that you asked, the board asked me to bring back. The first one is Eugene. Uh, it's, it's a noise ordinance code. It's a, I think, you know, I agree with Mr. Barnes's comment earlier, um, to have a extremely complicated, um, noise ordinance. I think for this county, a rural county, is not going to help our code enforcement. I think it's going to further clutter their ability to enforce code in the county. So if you wouldn't mind, what I'd like to do is have our code enforcement officer step up. I don't know that you've seen the packet from this morning and the examples. But, you know, this is something that I think we're going to have to bring back again. You're going to want to read through these codes. And we're going to get some input from our code enforcement officer and hopefully this board can come up with a noise ordinance code or, you know, something to deal with this that, um, isn't too complicated. Will give the code enforcement person a very clear code to quote, that it's easy for him and it's not into a bunch of one A, C, hyper, uh, you know, E, F and G also. So, you know, I, I think we need to keep it clear and, and clean. But, um, we are a rural, rural county. I agree that we need to be careful of the depth that we get into on this. But we do also have to protect citizens from, um, some people that get a little out of control at times. And I think as I've had Mr., uh, conversations with Mr. Fortman previously, um, he writes a lot fewer violations than he should, or than he could, not that he should, but he writes much, much fewer than he could. So he's about the relationships as well and keeping, uh, our citizens satisfied. But he has to have the, um, the wherewithal that if things get out of hand and it's a continued nuisance, I think that, um, to protect our citizens, we have to have a, we're a nation of laws and, and you have to have consequences for your actions. And when code enforcement comes and says, please don't do this on the second or third time, by the fourth time, it's time to take an action. So if, if we could, Mr. Fortman, I would like to hear your thoughts on this. You'll be the enforcement of it and, uh, and clarity of the code, you know, how, how in-depth you think this board should look, those kind of things. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm just going to start with just 32nd history to understand why the sheriff had his position and why it's code enforcement. The Oregon Legislature created noise as part of the pollution for DEQ. They took it out of the penal code and put it into the DEQ realm. DEQ passed their own regulations and then passed enforcement powers allowing local government to adopt their own ordinances as long as they meet the minimum standards of the state ordinance on, uh, noise environment. Our problem, of course, has been why we work cooperative with DEQ. DEQ can't afford to be down here for every complaint, which is why code enforcement ends up enforcing a lot of DEQ regulations in the state. The biggest problem, I'm going to say, in any ordinance that you have is getting people to understand and to cooperate with it and to get it to its presentable to the courts. My department has a lot of experience enforcing a very similar ordinance to this, the nuisance animal ordinance, where we get complaints about barking dogs and these situations. For us to, our first has been, as, as Commissioner Pash has said, is try to co-op, co-op, co-op people into cooperation and to understanding what their situations are. We spend a lot of time doing that and a lot of time going back, trying to deal with people and setting up training programs. Where we run, when that runs out, having an ordinance that's clear and understandable and having the board's direction and how you want us to proceed with it and having the courts understanding how we are proceeding with it, um, is where my concern is in code enforcement. And I'm going to use again, the barking dog thing. We get barking dog complaints, um, and they're very unsettling. People start fighting over that. They, you know, they pull guns out on each other over barking dogs. For us, when the collaborative education of people have not worked, um, and we have to go to a citation capacity or avenue, enforcement avenue, it gets into what can we present legally to the court to show that there's a disturbance of animals? And our animal statute, it's very ambiguous, is too disturbing. It doesn't have timeframes. It doesn't have a lot of things that we can check off the list and say, these are violations. So what Curry County did in that ordinance, enforcement of that ordinance, is we followed what other counties have done. And that was setting up a program where, uh, property owners or complatens can keep a log and present a log to us and sign the log that this is a truthful log or present us with videos or recordings. And then based upon their representation, then present it if we, into the court, into the citation system. We don't have staff to go out at two o'clock in the morning and monitor barking dogs or people partying in our houses. So this is the best way to do that. And again, it, I think this board needs to realize that this is an emotional argument, as you saw last week on both sides. You know, my God, I'm being disturbed and how dare you tell me what to do? So I've looked at similar things. I have 132 pages of different ordinances around and they run from the gamut of very narrow and defined X number of decibels at X number of times to very ambiguous ones saying if it just bothers the, the neighborhood. And, um, the board, I think, needs to give us enough tools or that we can properly take a case to court when, when we don't have cooperation on these things. And these are, are things that, again, that are very emotional. They're one of the hardest cases we deal with is, is just dealing with both sides are angry on these things, as, as you saw. Again, for Commercial, Commissioner Herzog, to understand what code enforcement was set up by the board years ago, when I came on board, was that we respond to complaints. We're a response agency. We don't go out looking for complaints. We don't go looking for even animals in, in the streets and all that jazz or garbage. And the only exception to that is life safety issues. And we get involved when we do see something that's going to cause injury or people getting into war. So I'm going to the board saying, you need to provide us with your direction. How, how stringent do you want to make this? And I would suggest that you continue the, the way code enforcement was set up several years ago when I came on board that we try to do education, collaborative, co-op-ing people into, into it. But give us the tools at the end, like some of your, your agenda items, so we may enforce it. I learned in my college days, for justice to work, it has to be swift and sure. We have to have that definition.
So if I could, Mr. Fortman, uh, judge being. So if I could, Mr. Fortman, uh, Judge Bean, I don't, I don't want to put any pressure on you at all, but you are inevitably one of the people that hears this when, when it comes to your court. How would you like to see, would you let, do you think it would be best for you to adjudicate different cases? If it's written more narrowly? Uh, I mean, I think to get too broad here would be, would be counterproductive to your, to the bench.
I wouldn't be allowed to answer that question.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Council Huddle? Sorry.
So, um, let me try to weigh in a little bit. So first of all, um, you have a policy decision to make. Do we want a noise ordinance or not? You've heard from one member of the community that says, you know, this is not the government's business. This should be resolved by private people. The other side of that coin is essentially if someone doesn't have the resources to hire a lawyer, so basically then, you know, poor people would suffer essentially is one of the, one of the ideas there. And there's also a philosophy that, uh, you know, government should do for people what they can't do for themselves, utilities, roads, those kind of things. So then what would be successful? What's the typical examples? And I think, um, really what Code Enforcement Officer Fortman's asking for is, is some guidelines. As a lawyer who has enforced noise, noise ordinances in the past, and I gave Commissioner Pash the copy of the noise ordinance that I handled in Medford Municipal Court a number of times. The, the idea, it's, it's always easier from a prosecutorial standpoint when you have a, you know, quantitative, threshold, and you can verify easily with proof and facts that that threshold has been exceeded. So some classic examples of quantitative thresholds are hours of operation. So when do we want to regulate the noise? Typically, you know, daylight hours is one good starting point. Sometime, and you'll see through the examples, if you look through them, they usually say 7:00 AM to somewhere between 7:00 and 10:00 PM at night. Uh, and then it's the type of noise. Uh, animals are typically a source of noise, but, uh, and then musical, um, events, music from either a vehicle or a, or a stereo. And then, um, a distance away, how far away can you hear the noise? And what is the volume of the noise measured in decibels? So really, times, distance, and, and decibels would be the, I think, some of the common, um, factors of what you put in a noise ordinance. And Dave, you've had experience and you've looked at a number of them. Are you seeing anything much different than that besides just the type of noises and some exceptions? You know, for farm operations, some of the things we like to have in counties. And, and the other issue with noise ordinances, uh, we're, they're easier, they're more easily accepted by the population when you're in a city where you have, you know, where you have a lot of residences in, in close proximity. And I think people move to the county for certain freedoms and such, you know, there's different philosophy in the citizenship. I don't want to, I'm, I'm overgeneralizing. Obviously, everyone likes peace and quiet, and the rules of, uh, you know, nuisance and such not apply evenly across the board. But, uh, um, again, I think for a county noise ordinance, I think, starting maybe smaller and, you know, getting to the ones that are obvious and then expanding that if we can. So that's really the only, you know, input I can give from just my experience with some of this stuff. So, uh, if that makes sense to the board, I can work with Dave Fortman. We can put together something to do with times, uh, distances, and, uh, decibels, and then types of noises and maybe some exceptions. Oh, um.
That's what I was going to say. Don't forget exceptions.
Your Honor, there cannot be a rule without at least one exception. But thank you. And, and yeah, and those are also in the books. So emergencies and whatnot, so.
And just one, I'm sorry. And one other one, but it is covered in Article 11, is the ability of code enforcement to not have to write a citation to.
Oh, discretionary, yeah. Certainly, uh, usually there's prosecutorial discretion, uh, you know, the, anyway, that's, yeah. I, I think that's written into most, I think that's generally in our code regardless, wherever it appears in our code. And we actually have a section of our code, I think, reserved for a noise ordinance. I think it's Article 12. Yeah, good, very good.
Council Huddle, thank you very much. I'm going to go to Commissioner Pash and then back to Commissioner Herzog, please.
I, I would just ask from my point, I would ask this board, um, when we direct staff on how to do this. You know, we do live in a, in a rural county and, and a, a lot of people come here for their freedoms as well as their retirements, those kind of things. So I would just hope that this board would, as Council stated, start out smaller than bigger. Start out, you know, more narrow and, and, you know, we can always expand that if we have to. But I think, uh, to, I just, I don't want to see, you know, say, say, uh, Mr. Fortman retires and we get another person in and he's got a, you know, a different mentality than, than Mr. Fortman, who's very soft-spoken and kind. Um, and he's, first time he hears, you know, Mr. Barnes' stereo, two decibels too high, is over there citing him a hundred dollar ticket. I think I'd rather start out much narrower and, uh, and leave a lot of that up to, um, the code enforcement officer, and then we can always adjust it from there.
If I could just add one other thing, um, you know, we did hear from a citizen. And, uh, you know, the, the things that she described, the conduct she described, certainly it would clearly violate the hours, and it would just be a simple matter of, of documenting either the decibels or what have you. So, um, just so the board's clear, the type of ordinance that I would envision would, would allow us to, um, issue a citation for the kind of conduct that was described, um, by that citizen.
Commissioner Herzog, please.
That, that was, that would hit it pretty much on the head. I, I want to, you know, I felt for that lady at last week. So if, I would, I would agree with what John just said is. Does that, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Herzog. Uh, thank you both for bringing up that lady. She traveled from Brookings here twice. You can see the intensity that she is dealing with. Uh, I thought despite the intensity, she was pretty rational, but she is, she's hurting. And, uh, I think that affected us all. You know, the best example I have, uh, people like to have their dogs run on the beach. And that's not acceptable in a lot of places, but it is here. And I think that's really good. And most people that I know take really, take really good responsibility with their dogs. What we're talking about here, I think, is, this is only my view, um, and yet I think it's, it's got merit. Of course I think that. Uh, but this is about disturbing the peace. This is about respect for your neighbors. This is about, uh, Curry County being different in a different way. In that people come here because it's so special. And are we going to add to that? Or are we going to detract from that and just say, go get a lawyer, or tell you, go sue your landlord? You know, I, or their landlord. So I just want to be really careful. I'm, I'm in with, uh, the approach that I'm hearing today, if I understand it right, that we don't have to come up with something really complicated. Might have a, you know, a converse impact. But it is a public safety issue. When you talk about people being so frustrated because they can't sleep, that they go for their guns, you know, I mean, we, we, we know that's not an uncommon thing. And if we're, maybe it is. I mean, you would be able to speak to that. Huh?
It is common. You also have to remember, we're a rural county, yes, but we have pockets of city. And, you know, the rules have to be written for both sides to go in here. To answer your question, your comment, Commissioner Boyce, when the board had us take over animal control and I met with Brookings, Brookings said, oh, do you know what you're getting into? 60% of our complaints are animal issues. These are people who are, feel disenfranchised. They can't afford to go sue somebody or, or do something. So then bad decisions get made down the road. And code enforcement has, has always been trying to solve problems within a neighborhood for the benefit of everybody.
And that's a tough, tough duty, but I think we're getting better late than they ever, never, if Curry County is actually late. But, uh, you know, I brought up the motorcycle thing before, where, you know, you're, you can hear them from here just bailing through. And I, you know, I didn't get a lot of support or concern on that, or maybe it's absolutely irrelevant, uh, not to me. But, you know, keeping those decibels down and being respectful, um, you know, maybe this starts the process. Again, we're keeping it simple. I think we've got a real good approach here, and I'm, um, I'm, I'm happy about it. So, good. Did you have anything else, by the way? I think we're okay on time, if you.
No, other than.
Mr. Pash?
No, I think this is a good start, uh, to have Council and, and Mr. Fortman get together. And I think we're pretty much in agreement that we don't want to go too, too far in detail on this and getting into the four A, B, C, and Gs and Zs. Um, you know, it's a good, clean way to start.
Council Huddle?
That's it. I, I mean, Commissioner Pash took the lead on this. Uh, Commissioner Pash, do you want Dave and I to come back to you first with some, uh, with our drafts or something, or do you just want us to bring it back to the board?
I think just bring it back to the board. I'm, I'm, I'm sure you two, with your experience, uh, are going to be much wiser than I am.
Thank you for the reading. This is good stuff. So we have a direction. We're okay with that. No other discussion needed, I assume?
Can we pick, do you need a week, two weeks that we can come back on, or roughly?
Uh, I, I think probably two weeks at least. And, and, uh, because a week is just a little, little rush.
No, I understand. I just don't want to, I don't want to get three, you know, three months down the road, that's all.
A week is tomorrow, so really, let's go for two weeks. We'll see if we can do that. Thanks.
Thank you.
So gentlemen, do we take an early lunch, or do, maybe we could do, uh?
We could, because my comments today, I'm usually very, very brief. My comments today are going to be 10 or 15 minutes at least. So, um, I'm usually a minute or two.
So why don't we do that now and stick to the 12 o'clock lunch?
I don't have my comments with me, though.
Okay. Commissioner Herzog, do you have any commissioner updates?
How about director's report?
Whoops.
Number eight, is that?
Do, do you have a director's report?
I do.
Yeah, okay. There we go. Thank you.
For time-wise.
Yeah, it won't take long.
Okay.
I don't, I don't say lots. I, I did want to give the commissioners an update on, on OpenGov. We did go live. But that doesn't mean we're actually entering anything in right now. Um, we, we are approaching the GL, making sure that there are no mistakes with the GL. And unfortunately, we have found, um, many mistakes that we're working through and, and we, we are being delayed because of that right now. There were unfortunately some issues that happened on OpenGov's side. Um, their information somehow became, um, somewhat corrupted. And so, and so we're, we're kind of doing the same thing we have already done, but we are almost there, I believe. And hopefully today or tomorrow, we should be up and running in OpenGov. Also with OpenGov, we are starting today to run parallel payroll testing. That way we can get through all the kinks and everything before we go live on payroll in, in April. As you know, we are working on our 2020 audit right now. Um, that was due December 31st. We have filed an extension to, to push it out a little bit further. And, and we hope to, to get it done in the next couple of months, um, allowing us to start with our 2021 audit, and, and we'll file that on time next year. That, that is my hope. And so we're working hard on that to, to, um, reach that goal. Last thing I wanted to just touch on, and, and Commissioner Herzog has already, um, touched on it a little bit, but, um, as, as we know, there are some big issues over, um, in the jail on Sallyport Roof and with the, with the leaking. There's at least four, um, pretty major leaks over there, um, causing some, some, um, safety issues. Some of those leaks, I believe two of the leaks, if I'm not mistaken, are leaking into the, the radio room, which potentially could cause, um, damage to equipment and, and future, um, financial expenses with that. So, um, Chet has been pretty involved in this. Uh, Commissioner Herzog has gone over there and, and looked at everything. I was unable to look at it all, but we, we, all three of us are going to meet later on this week to, to see what can, can be done before, um, something really major occurs over there and, and costs the county a lot more money than maybe it will to, to take care of it now. So I'm sure there'll be more on that, um, after we meet, but that is everything I have. Thank you.
Dr. Rickert, where are we on the community development block grants? I wanted to tune in on that meeting yesterday, and I didn't get a call back, and I would have failed to get on anyway, just for the time.
So that, that meeting was canceled yesterday. I ended up having to push it off. We are in the application stages right now, um, for that, to, to receive that money for, for our veterans or for the veteran building. Um, that's where we're at with that.
I got a big file on that. Actually, I got it right here. And, you know, one time it looked like we might, we had Business Oregon and CCD both here. Just right pre-COVID, and we had a couple of different projects. So instead of talking about that today, um, what's your, what's your thoughts on? You know, I'm, I'm looking at the Port Oxford Community Center. Um, I also looked at possibly work for the Port of Brookings Harbor. And, uh, we, just tell me if you feel like, and I see we have Coordinator Madison just came in. She may want to, um, community development block grants? Is that, did that perk your interest? Okay, that's fine. But feel free if you want to contribute something. But where are we on, we're, we're right now in the application process, uh, with the Veterans Facility in Brookings?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can you give us a quick report on that, or do you want to delay till next week, or what's your thought?
I'll delay till next week. It, um, I'll have more information at that point.
Okay, can you tell me what, just this then, about generally the level of money that we might be looking at there on that grant?
I, I don't remember. Um, I'd have to look that up.
I think somebody might know here. Welcome, Ms. Madison.
Thank you. Summer Madison Economic Development. Um, to be safe, the overall investment at the event, or the, uh, Veterans Building is 150,000.
Was that for a remodel, though?
Well, that's the addition of some ADA complacency with a wheelchair ramp. And some features that would make it, um, not just accessible for the veterans that are, um, visiting there, but you've got WIC services out of there. You have, um, HUD VASH. And you've got a lot of, um, services that serve exactly what the CDBG grant caters to. And so, um, yeah, there's a lot of services that, uh, we're hoping to see continue as a result of that building being rehabbed.
So 150,000, and is there any extra, uh, office space down there that's available?
Yep, a little bit.
So that would be one consideration. And I thought it was going to be quite a bit more than that. That's why I was concerned for, you know, the potential of a tear down and, uh, that, that.
That, that is a potential possibility, is that tear down and rebuild.
150,000?
No.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Pash?
And that's what I understood, that there was, uh, a contractor was looking at the building to see if it would be cheaper to just tear it down and rebuild it, or, um, or to remodel it. And I, I don't know why the number a million two or a million four came to mind on the value of the property, uh, for a full repair versus tearing it down. I don't know where that number came from. Maybe I dreamed it.
Well, do, do we know the square footage? By chance, even rough?
I understand that the original blueprints for that building have actually been MIA for a while.
I think it's probably 4,000. I'm making a wild guess.
What's the address of this building?
Railroad. It's right down just this side of the library. And the sheriff also has, uh, a storage unit on the west side. But the building is in bad shape. That's my, that's my concern.
Here in town?
Oh, Brookings Railroad Street.
Railroad, that's, yeah.
You know a railroad.
I do.
So thanks for letting me bring that up. I'm, uh, do you want to?
I'll find it. I'll find, I'll figure it out.
The interior of the building, if I might add, um, has been rehabbed. So that's why it's not going to cost so much. Maybe initially it was over 1.2, but I know they've chipped away at, um, redoing windows and the interior. So it's really just the exterior that needs to be, uh, addressed. And I know that, um, the VSO has the contractor coming back to make sure that the bid that they received months ago is still accurate. And I also understand that we've already invested money, uh, with an architect that has done a study as well.
How many, how many, um, renters, that's not the right term, but occupants, maybe?
You've got orca, you've got orca.
There's about four in there.
Yeah, I would say four to five.
Yeah, okay. So thanks on, on that.
Juvenile Department.
And I asked you the other day about parking, and you had a good answer. And so you. And so you, you're less concerned about that than I am.
Right, so the, the great thing is that that building is within walking distance to other services in the immediate area. And it is in a residential neighborhood with the on-street parking and some of the accommodations that the architect, contractor, and VSO have worked towards. That will alleviate some of the issues with parking that they've had there previously.
So it, it's gonna be adequate probably?
I believe so.
Okay. And, and your point on the remodeling's already been done inside, that's, that's very good. I've seen that a couple of times and so that kind of sways me too, even if it's more than a hundred and fifty. But, you know, we have to, we have to apply for these grants to really pinpoint where we want them. That, this might be back on my number one, you know, project of preference. Go ahead.
I do know that there were some foundation issues and there was also some mold issues down there that are still there.
It's an old building.
So that's what I'm saying. I, I think that's why we're, it's being looked at for a possible teardown. Because there are some issues that are very serious that they haven't dealt with yet. And that's my understanding.
Go ahead, who was that?
Yeah, we're, we're waiting to hear back from the architects on their assessment of the building, whether it's a teardown and rebuild or, or a remodel.
That, that would be very helpful. Okay, thanks again for taking this time. But if it's four thousand square feet, we'll say just roughly a two hundred and fifty a square foot for total, plus the destruction, or excuse me, teardown cost, that's a, ooh, that's a lot of money. I don't, I don't know my math. Go ahead.
So I know Port Orford's been really active in raising the funds to rehab their community center. And I just wanted to throw out there that maybe while we're in the process of making the veterans' building on railroad more accessible and user friendly, that we look to maybe establishing that community center in, in North County as a, a facility that might qualify as events, that it might be eligible for TLT funds.
And, and they do food service, which is part of the equation for qualifying, so very good. I think that's a good idea you just communicated there. Hey, thanks for dropping in.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Okay, anything else? No? So we got about five minutes. I'll just, a couple of things on my, we'll come back to you for commissioner comments after the executive session.
Okay.
Kind of the schedule we're headed here. Director Rickert, thanks for the, again, on the community development block grants. That's, that was really good to have that little bit of time there. We have on March meetings, three, three, and three seventeen. One of the commissioners would like to change that March seventeenth meeting to the twenty fourth. Can we take a look at that now and, or when we come back maybe and just see if that's gonna work? Be possible? I, I will sure assume it would be. Yes?
As a reminder, nothing past January was approved. There wasn't a meeting scheduled past January approved.
Okay, that's right.
But we can take a look at, at it when we come back and.
Do you wanna maybe put that on the?
The twentieth?
My whole idea was once we got into February, just having four meetings, you know, two first and third Wednesdays, including workshops if needed. And of course, you know, I think everybody agrees, we want very productive meetings. We don't wanna have meetings just to have meetings. So do you wanna put that on the twentieth agenda and we will approve that for you? And that, that's the only thing I'm aware of right now that would be beneficial. It has something to do with grandkids, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it does.
Counsel Huddle?
Thanks, I just had a question for Director Rickert. And talking about March and whatnot, I start thinking budget. Do we have the budget schedule? Usually that's a, something that we start putting together and the board gets an approval and, because once we get into March and May and everything, so that's something you might wanna go back and check, check on. If you haven't already, maybe you have.
I'm gonna be bringing that up with the email I sent out to all the elected officials and Director Rickert on a work plan for, where that is included. I think you got a copy. You may not. I think you did.
I don't remember.
And so I think that, that's gonna be under commissioner comments, but it is probably gonna take twenty minutes or so today. Maybe not, we'll see. But we'll, I think it needs to be addressed today and I think it's gonna be very good to, to work with everybody on that. Commissioner Pash?
Uh, one thing also, having the schedule, assuming the schedule for February was left the way it is. Just so you know, if you wanna change that, I've already made some plans during the between, right after the second, the first or the second meeting. So in other words, I've allowed for the board meetings, but if you change that to the third week or fourth week of February, I'm not gonna be available.
Did I say the fourth week?
No, 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 we're, I'm talking, I'm just letting you know that I was assuming that February would be left, you know, as the four meetings that we already have. So I was just letting you know if you wanted to change that, that I will not be available on the fourth Wednesday of February.
So, but we are pretty committed to the first and third Wednesdays.
Yes, yes.
For almost indefinitely.
That's how I've scheduled my life.
Okay, I agree.
I have one other question for Director Rickert before the break. Is Monday a, a holiday for the county? Is county closes coming Monday for, is it Martin Luther King Jr.? Okay, so county operations won't be going on Monday. Thanks, okay.
One of my heroes, fantastic, okay. Good for that.
Have a dream.
So we can, we can recess for three minutes early here as we'll be back. Let's be back at just a little bit before one o'clock.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called nine one one and no one answered? What if you couldn't?
Coach Swift.
Kevin Swift. Dang legend.
When they brought their, their youngest daughter out to my ranch to start with the, the foundation. Some don't have mics on yet, yeah, they're.
Hello?
Commissioner Boyce is very guilty of that usually all the time.
Ms. Westover, can you hear us okay?
Put it on his, right on his computer.
Yeah, we need to get your volume up just a little bit. Yeah, hold one moment, please.
Can you hear me all right?
Welcome everyone. We're gonna recess. Our general session, June, excuse me, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. We're going into executive session. Agenda item ten A, one nine two point six six zero two D. And I think we officially have everybody here we need. Welcome, Ms. Westover. I think we just got your volume up a little bit. Can we do a test, please?
Right, how's that coming through now?
Wonderful, thank you. Very good.
How's that, then Hibbler, with that BYU phone, that's a call?
Well, we're here with Commissioner Colleen Roberts for the monthly meeting of the O N C Board, which Colleen sits on. Colleen, why don't you tell our audience a little bit about your mission and, and what you guys discuss at these monthly meetings?
Sure, our O N C Board is of the eighteen counties in Oregon that are part of the O N C lands on their B L M, federal lands. And we discuss everything about these lands. The O N C Act of nineteen thirty seven is our primary focus, how the decisions that these lands get managed. Do they match up with the congressional mandate of the O N C Act? And how we can better educate and help administer the care of these lands for the health and safety and welfare of the citizens that, that we represent.
I would imagine you discuss things like how many board feet can be taken out of the forests in different areas? Are these things that come up each month?
Yes, well, harvest man, harvest timber management is a big part of our conversation, as is lately the fire issues.
We're here today with Commissioner Dan DeYoung of Josephine County. Dan, you have an important role on the O N C lands board. And we're here in beautiful Gold Beach, Oregon, discussing the monthly matters of O N C. What was your main focus at this meeting?
Today, we had a really good sit down with two representatives of the B L M. And there's constantly, we work with B L M because actually the O N C lands are on B L M lands and that's our concern. Mainly the O N C Board of Directors, which is a membership from all eighteen counties. We always meet, I think it's bimonthly and then we have an annual meeting. And it's basically to discuss what the sign says, Forest Health, Jobs, and County Services. That the money coming from the sale of timber on O N C lands goes through the federal government. They take their share out of it and then return it back to the counties to be used for basically jobs, county services, a lot of county services such as law enforcement, schools. There's just an awful lot of things that these individual counties can use the money for. But it's from the sale of timber on the O N C lands. O N C lands goes way back to nineteen thirty seven with the O N C nineteen thirty seven, O N C Congressional Act and the O N C Act of nineteen thirty seven. We're just trying to get back to the actual verbiage and, and the language that's in that act. It's surprising to us how we can ignore a congressional, congressional act. That's, it remains that, that remains to be answered by the federal government, but that's what we wanna get back to.
Hi there, I, I'm Tillamook County Commissioner Dave Yamamoto. I'm a member of the O N C Board and also the Chair of the Council of Forest Trust Land Counties. And in Tillamook County, it's very important that we consider natural resource-based economies. So in Tillamook County, we have lots of dairy. I'm sure you're familiar with Tillamook creamery. But also lots of state and federal timber lands. When it comes to federal timber lands in particular, everyone thinks that we're looking at timber revenue. And that's very important, but one side of, of the coin that people don't consider are the family wage jobs that come with all timber. It's not just the timber receipts that we get. These are family wage jobs, these are fully benefited jobs. Whereas on the tourism side, you, the income is about a third of what, what we would consider a family wage job. And there are also no, no benefits with those. So timber receipts are very important, but it's the family wage jobs that they create at the same time, which are very important to counties like Tillamook.
Perfect, keeping it real for families in Tillamook County.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yamamoto.
Thank you very much.
All right. We are here with County Commissioner Bob Main from Coos County, Oregon. And we've had the monthly meeting of O N C lands here. And Mr. Main, Commissioner Main, I should say, tell us what your role is, Bob, on the O N C lands board?
I am the Vice President of the O N C Association of O N C Counties.
Okay.
Consists of eighteen O N C counties, Western Oregon counties.
Okay.
And we make sure that the counties receive their payments from those O N C lands that Congress designated for the sole purpose of those eighteen O N C counties. For no other reason, Congress decided that when they took back the lands and took them off the tax roll, that the county should benefit from the harvest of those lands. Without that, the tax rates like in my county would be two to three times higher.
Oh, okay, so you help keep the tax rates down in your county by utilizing the full function of this congressional act? Okay, wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are here with Oregon Curry County Commissioner Court Boyce. Thank you so much for taking a moment to speak with us.
Well, thank you.
Regular session from executive session, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. Next item on the agenda is seven, item, action item seven. No, excuse me, seven E, Fair Board, discuss and possibly appoint, like the word possibly, appoint vacant Fair Board positions in looking for current Fair Board comments. Commissioner Pash?
Microphone?
Yes, so I asked that during the lunch recess that we could, we could look at all of the examples of the applicants. And I've, I think we've learned that we didn't all get time to look at the applicants in the depth that you'd like to feel comfortable to do that. So there is some issues with possibility of not having quorums. So it would be my motion that we now, because we all know Mr. Chivante, he's been on the board for more than a decade, I believe.
Only two terms prior.
Okay. That we, we reappoint Mr. Chivante to the board and then, and then bring this back for next week's session to have two more people to, for the board to appoint to the Fair Board.
Way to go, board. Discussion? So when we come back on the twentieth, this will be an action item. We have, we could, we could actually get additional Fair Board applicants. But right now, we have four for two positions.
Yes.
That we will take care of on the twentieth.
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Pash?
All right.
Vice Chair Herzog. Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, Commissioner Pash, commissioner comments, updates, please.
Well, some of what I want, let me, let me talk about this first. This is the, when, when Director Ward was in here earlier today, she was talking about the reduction of the risk categories for the county. And this was the county risk level categories that was produced by the state. And I didn't know she was gonna speak on it already, but Curry County was one of only four counties that the numbers have gone down. Some of these counties, the numbers went up dramatically. So I just wanna say thanks to everyone out there who's working hard to protect themselves and the people around them. We went from sixty-six around Christmas time down to thirty-three. That's half of what we had just a few weeks ago, so kudos to everybody on that. And if anyone wants this, I guess it's on the state, it's on the state website.
Commissioner Pash?
Yes, sir.
You said the number sixty-six. What, what is that referencing?
That was the case count on, from twelve thirteen to twelve twenty-six. That moved us into the extreme.
So just for the two-week time period, we had sixty-six cases added?
No, well, yes, during that, during that time period, there were sixty-six. No, that was the active case count. In other words, some had, some new ones had come in.
Very good.
And some had dropped off, but there were some that were still in there currently, so that was the total.
We're at thirty, we're over three hundred cases now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But that's over eleven months, or ten and a half months?
Yes.
Thank you.
Another thing I wanna talk about, and I normally wouldn't talk about this in this session, but we did have a, a conversation earlier about civility in the county, you know? What should we do to protect the county? How do we do that? Those kind of things. And many of you may know, and I don't even know, there's probably ten people watching this. But a lot for the board as well. Many of you know that I have a foundation that we run at my ranch called Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation, and it is a Christian-based foundation. And we are about realizing dreams, encouraging hope, and building faith. We had, and this goes along with a lot of how we see people in the county, to learn to get along with everyone, not judge people. You know, look at, look at the person and, and, and give them a fair shake before we start to look down on people and have respect for them and who they are as you get to know them. Don't prejudge them. But we had a, a young man that came to our ranch. When I took office, I took, I stood down from the day-to-day operations of Dreams, Hope, and Faith Foundation. And my wife had a young man come to our ranch that everyone thought was homeless and not a good fit for a foundation such as Dreams, Hope, and Faith. And we had several people in the county literally publicly kind of disgrace him. That they judged him as a homeless person who was very hurtful to the county. We had full background checks done on him. I didn't even have as much as a parking ticket in his background. He was only twenty years old though. And he, he was a guy that just liked, he had a truck with a camper kind of a thing on the back of it. And he lived in his truck basically, but he was a good guy, you know? So we invited, my wife invited him to the ranch to start helping out slowly. And through the years, it actually fractured, or through the months, it actually fractured the foundation in that a lot of people stopped going to the foundation, literally called our sheriff on a couple of occasions and said, there's this crazy man that's out at this foundation around these kids and you shouldn't have him there. That's with no proof of anything. This is a letter that he spent two years at the foundation, a little more than two years. This is a letter that he wrote to the kids at this foundation. Cause he sent them a, he went home, back home to live with his family, which is in Missouri, I believe. And he sent out a huge box and we got a huge box a few. And he sent out a huge box, and we got a huge box a few weeks ago, from this twenty-two-year-old kid. And he sent a letter in with it to all the kids. And it says, I really miss you guys. I miss hiking and eating blackberries, running down to get you off the bus and then running back. And then he mentions kids' names, which I'm not going to mention because they're minors. Uh, I miss swimming with you guys. Um, I miss sitting in the garden and talking about the plants in the greenhouse. I miss giving, uh, so, so-and-so, I miss you giving me advice on the best strawberry taste that there are out there. These are all little kids that he's talking to. Um, how to properly eat a raspberry. Uh, I was sad to leave, but I had to follow my heart and my dream was taking me back to another place. So I believe your dreams. Always remember you are more than your age. You're not just kids, you're humans that God created. Seek Him out. He hears every dream you have. He lives inside you. He has given you, out of all the wonders of the universe, the powerful gift that, to, that you can make your dreams come true. He lives in each kind deed that you do. Excuse me. He lives in the wind that blows through the trees and the crashes of the waves beating on your heart, in your heart. He does not force anyone, but faithfully he waits for his daughters and sons to return. And he can do this by making our earth beautiful again and filling your loving families on their little, uh, in their own little homes. So it's up to you, each of you, and I believe in you, what good things you can do for your families, even if they don't do nice things to you. Cause a lot of the kids that we have, their parents are, are the biggest problem in their life. What, what kind of life can you imagine for yourself and for the earth? Close your eyes, ranch rompers, and dream about it. Imagine how all the good things you will make, you will make, you feel and follow those feelings. And when everything gets tough, don't get discouraged. Just say, I got this, and believe that you do. And if you believe and you're not afraid to work hard, anything is possible. And then he goes on to say that he got, he's got every one of these kids a present and some tools to help them to deal with some of the same things that he dealt with. Because these kids are looked, looked down upon because of the situations in their lives. And I just want to say, excuse me. This is a young man that the community wanted to throw away. And my wife said no. And he has turned out to be a pillar in my life. That's all I have.
When's he coming back?
Soon.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Pash?
That's all, sir. Thank you.
That was a wonderful story and, uh, thank you very, very, very much for sharing that. And kudos to your, your wife and family and your whole impact. Your whole impact. Oh, deep breath, huh? So... I'm, I'm a little distracted here, but in a good way. Um, you know, we've talked about the state of the county. I'm trying to find the time to do that. Uh, I may beg for forgiveness, but right now I, I might try and do something pretty minor, uh, board on the, uh, twentieth. Um, I'm, I'm open to any counsel or recommendation there. It's been quite a year. It's been, it's been quite a transition between the two boards, um, all the above. So just keep that in mind. Um, I have my notes on the Community Development Block Grants. I think we made some real progress there today. I certainly learned a lot, um, and grateful for that. Um... Let's see. You know, really the, oh, one soddeno, sudden oak death. You know, some of you might remember, I registered between, uh, Council Huddle and Commissioner Hersog as a sudden oak death map I put up in two thousand seventeen. It's remarkable that quarantine area and the, uh, the general affected area, they call it the GAO, is, is expanding, but not to our worst fears. Uh, but this pathogen that is affecting five different oak species, that is even into a different strain now is into our conifers, our firs, our, our sacred trees. Uh, of course, our oaks are too, especially native Americans. But the only oak that seems to be able to withstand that, um, is the white oak. And they're, they're a mighty oak species, especially in southern Oregon. But anyway, it is, uh, the EU one strain is, is, uh, what they call the European strain. So I, I've just, I've been on this task force for four years now. Started originally by Representative David Brock Smith and, um, Senator Jeff Merkley, uh, as co-conveners. And, um, I've just, uh, it's, it's quarantine inside Curry County. The basic part of this is we need to keep it in Curry County. And we're really starting to get some help from the Department of Interior. I just want to give a shout. First of all, I met, I met a former county commissioner from Tillamook County, Mark Labhart. And so I've worked with him now four years. He is the, uh, Sudden Oak Death Task Force facilitator. Just an incredible guy. And I remember when he first introduced me, he said, uh, Commissioner Boyce is, this is four years ago, the new commissioner from Curry County. And, um, you know, I've been the commissioner here for, uh, just retired his twelve years. And I said, well, uh, Mark Labhart, I, you don't have to worry, I will never catch you. Cause nobody in Curry County has been re-elected for twelve years. And so that big group, I got a, that got a laugh. But, um, Senator Merkley has really come through, his staff and his office, one point two million. Um, in, in, in rough figures, that will come half to Curry County through, uh, the Oregon State University and the, um, the remedies for that. Um, and we, we really weren't anticipating that much, a little over half of that. So I just want to give him and his staff, his new field rep to replace, um, Amy Amraine, who I just, uh, really enjoyed working with, was grateful for, uh, you know, the AOC District, uh, four, five county Douglas, Kusky, Jackson, Josephine. She finally retired and she's been replaced by Dana Black. And so I'm building a relationship, you referred to her earlier, how important that is. And, um, you know, I, I sent Amy Amraine a retirement letter, uh, thank you, and just recognition that ended up going out throughout the entire district. So I, I may even have Ms. Black tune into the board, uh, and just introduce herself. And, um, she's, uh, um, she comes highly recommended. We'll miss Ms. Amraine. But anyway, very, very thankful for that money, uh, and that focus and that effort on this absolute dreadful disease that's, that's hurting a great deal of our forest. You know, beyond that, all I have is the, you know, the, uh, the positive, what I refer to as a positive challenge to Brad Rickert on the work plan. And frankly, I think we made a lot of progress on that today. Uh, he knows that, uh, I've, no, uh, nothing personal to him and to the contrary. Uh, but I've worked under, um, four different, four different, uh, Director of Operations or County Administrators, and, um, it hasn't worked. Um, and except for John Hid in the first few months. And he was a tremendous bargain, uh, for what he actually cost the county. Now, having said that, I've also made it clear to Mr. Rickert that, you know, I, I, as one commissioner, really want the focus to be on the finances of this county. Uh, do I think he's capable of doing both jobs? Uh, yes. Um, but the distraction, as I put it, for lack of a better term, has been a concern for me, um, with the tremendous load he's carrying and so many questions and uncertainties that I have communicated to this board, uh, way before, way before now. On February fifth, um, you know, this is all public, so I'm not revealing anything that, that, that we don't know about. Uh, but it's just some of the financial, and this is not a conclusive list, but just some of the financial hits that we've even, uh, that we have not anticipated. Uh, this letter went out to the board on February fifth of this, excuse me, last year, two thousand twenty. And it basically just says, you know, the CCH litigation, uh, we lost a lot of money there. No fault of, uh, Council Huddle's, we just, uh, we did the best we could, but we still lost. And it- I'm not sure we lost money there, but- Okay. What would your, what would your time be worth there? I mean- Oh, I see. Yeah, I mean- Sure. Considerable amount of, okay, staff time. There, there's some we can't even calculate because of the load it put you under. And then we also had to get additional, here, here's where I'm going, though. We didn't anticipate this. We're trying to get, uh, Public Health squared away. Uh, but the citizens need, need to know where the money's going and why I would take this, this path to try and say, I'm uneasy. Okay? We have a, we have a new financial director that I think is capable, that a lot of people have confidence in, and I want to set him up for success. That's no secret, how I feel. Uh, we had a Curry jail settlement and a lawsuit was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That was in, uh, early nineteen. Uh, our towers, uh, we have, I mean, that is unbelievably costly. Do we have a choice? No. Um, you know, our phone system was thirty, excuse me, fifty thousand dollars to upgrade that. Uh, two different, uh, uh, HVAC systems, uh, heating and air conditioning, I couldn't think of it, I'm sorry. Uh, that's fifty thousand. Um, you know, the list goes on. A wage study for five, strategic plan for fifty. Um, you know, we're still dealing with, uh, trash properties that we end up, uh, we inherit so that we can do the best we can to, for public safety and not spreading disease and wildfire risk and all the rest of it. We have a lot of vehicles. Uh, I pushed back on that. Okay? We were sitting over there in the parking lot. We didn't know, I understand, that, uh, uh, COVID was coming. But, uh, even if we got a good deal, we need to, in my opinion, we need to move some of these vehicles. I mean, they're just sitting there. Um, and we, we don't need them. Uh, I was the first one to say, uh, you know, you got to travel to Salem. You got to travel a lot. In my first four years, I built a relationship. And now I'm glad to say that I wasn't, was, in a sense, uh, I didn't give the Zoom part enough of an opportunity to make work. So, uh, the meetings we have on Zoom, we're saving a lot of money. Uh, and I, yes, nothing like meeting face-to-face, but we're, I'm, I think we're still being effective and I'm, and I'm happy about that. And it's been a learning experience for me. And our whole, our whole staff is trying to perfect that and I think making very good progress. You know, I don't want Curry County to be behind just because we're in the southwest corner with the farthest away from Salem. And, uh, you know, we're rural, okay? We can still lead in a lot of ways. So there's, there's so many ways of money going out and have gone out. And I spoke out against that and I'd love to be wrong. Uh, we've got budget season coming up. Uh, there's so much pressure on, uh, Director Rickert and his staff. Um, and so I, the letter I sent has some specific work plan challenges. And I think he can rise to the surface. Here's one letter I got, uh, August eighteenth of, of last year from one of our, uh, key people in finance that says, we need somebody here full-time. Again, this is middle of August, for three to four months, and then probably we'll be able to cut back a little bit. Completion of the eighteen nineteen audit. And I think you reported today, that's done.
Yes.
And thank you. And, and, uh, good work. Uh, and then they go on, create a year-end adjusting entries, completing the MDNA, uh, create June thirtieth, twenty twenty year-end journal entries. This is the list. Create beginning balances journal entries for twenty, uh, twenty twenty twenty-one budget year. Review revenues per daily cash allocations, grant reconciliations and audits, bank reconciliations, assist with accounting verification and transition to Open Gov Accounting System. And then begin the two thousand nineteen twenty audit. And I think you said we're good. Thank you. We're, we're, we're on our way there. Uh, so, you know, that was just three months ago. Um, so these are key people, been with us a long time. They're not complaining, but they are concerned. Um, then on, uh, I'm moving as fast as I can, folks, uh, but this is very important. Um, then on December second, I asked former, uh, Director of Operations to please, I, I gave them six, excuse me, two weeks to the sixteenth and, cause I needed her report. And, um, it fell likewise into your lap. And I think you and staff did okay on that. Okay? Um, but you know, I'm just suggesting to the board that I'm trying to politely and respectfully beat the drum. Where are we in all of our finances? January sixth, the same thing, um, you know, at, at the end of that workshop, I asked for, we need to consider developing a precise plan, hopefully connected to our recent completed strategic study or plan. Again, it costs fifty thousand dollars. Um... Let's see. And then January, no, I'll skip that one. Um, and then January thirteenth, here we are today. Uh, Mr. Rickert is the second or third highest-paid employee now for the county. Uh, that's not a complaint. He may be worth every dime. I'm hoping he is because we're counting on him. And we're counting on him to lead. And I told a friend the other day, that guy, he can go over there and be a hero. He can go over to, to, to finance and do it. Um, so I come up with a specific plan, um, and I don't know if I'm going to get board approval. I did send it to you several days ago in hopes that you could read that and weigh in or be prepared, understand the, the, the potential gravity of where we are on this work plan. So, um, just about, you know, I'm two-thirds of the way through here. But, um, this is a letter to Director Rickert on January eleventh, so Monday, uh, seven thirty. Uh, I think you're aware, and as I've mentioned publicly, privately, and consistently, the deep concerns I have for the financial questions, even uncertainties currently facing Curry County. I've also clearly communicated that I am very sensitive to the huge issues, in my opinion, that you and your financial staff have inherited. And you know, when I say inherited, am I just going to point at one county administrator? Am I just going to point, I, you know, I've been here for four years. But I've also had boards that I have not been able, I've been in a minority position for two out of the two sections. And so I'm not just blaming, you know, anyone, but I do know that, or, or any one person. At least I'm trying not to. But I, I want to get to the bottom of this and make sure that the citizens' bases are covered. Um, so, uh, this weekend, I reviewed some of the BAC meeting videos and I paid close attention to the discussions we've had regarding the DCO position. Um, and, uh, yeah, I have some suggestions that I'm going to list below. And so, you know, I'd like to start with suggesting that the board review your position and progress, progress at the end of February. So that would be, what, five or six weeks? Um, and I could be persuaded that I'm wrong, that we do need a Director of Operations and it can be a combined position. Right now you have three titles, in my opinion. And that is, uh, you know, Curry County Accountant, uh, and Director of Finance and Director of County Operations. That's a lot. Uh, and so, um, again, I want to set you up for success. And I think this board has the capacity to do that, but I think we have, need some specific guidelines that we need to follow. So here goes. Develop a corrective action plan for the Finance Department to resolve the issues noted on the last two audits. After developing that CPA, CAP, excuse me, please schedule a BAC workshop review, uh, with the CCC board. Invite staff from Finance Department as you feel necessary. Please get this workshop scheduled by the end of January. Um, number two, a copy of the financial statements from the last two audits needs to be sent to all three commissioners. A copy of the letter or notice of the governing body from the last two audits needs to be sent to all three commissioners. Uh, we've already talked about the, uh, the, uh, payment, payroll issues, so I'm, I'm, I don't need to go over that anymore. Um, you know, I asked for, in my, uh, agenda sequence, I asked for, um, me, meeting, my meeting, financial reports, can be short and sweet. That didn't go anywhere. That's okay. Uh, Commissioner Hersog, you mentioned one about once a month. So maybe we can do that. Reinstate the monthly financial, keyword monthly, reviews that Hersog, um, and, excuse me, that department heads and elected officials that we used to receive. Um, so that's not your fault that we don't receive them now. I'm, I'm, and I'm not just trying to cover your bases here. I'm just being real and, and, uh, hopeful and, uh, supportive. Uh, Curry County generally has supplemental budgets during the course of the fiscal year to adjust revenues and expenses so that the county is within budget at the end of the fiscal year. Uh, I've asked you to develop a schedule, or I hope the board will say, develop a schedule for a supplemental budget that needs to get done before we begin the budgeting process for the next fiscal year. Um, and I, I think the deadline on that needs to be the end of February also. Um, and the fiscal budget preparation should have started by now. If not, when can we plan on starting that? I had one former Budget Committee member that's very familiar with our program. And, um, former commissioner, and, um, she's been following this really close. And, uh, she believes that it's going to take to get us whole, we need two Brad Rickards. That's a direct quote, uh, to be fair. Um, and then she would be optimistic. Um, and so maybe I'm overstating the load that you're under. Maybe I'm, uh, I don't mean to promote doom and gloom. I just want the county to be extremely well-protected. I'm going to say again and again, I want you to be set up for success. I believe you can do it. I'm pulling for you, counting on you. I know you're counting on us, too. Um, and so I, I want to review the DCO position and support you fully in it for the next six weeks until February, the end of February first of March. And then, um, if, if we're able to get some reasonable pro, reasonable progress on these requests and if the board agrees, the board doesn't agree, then I've got to file this away. Okay? Um, I hope that's not the case. Um, but, you know, if we get some of these things done- But, you know, if we get some of these things done, as the voters twice have said, no, we don't want a county administrator, we want full-time working commissioners, I might be able to look at the taxpayers and say, okay, here's why we adjusted, here's how we trimmed ourselves, and this is why I'm going to support this person, because he just proved he could do both. But the priority is all out for finances, all in for finances. So, board, do you want to discuss that? Do you want to complain? Do you want to offer amendments? I, I assume you had a chance to read it. Where are we, gentlemen?
Well, I think that's, these are your personal comments, so.
Yes.
I think it's, if you wanted to bring it back as a discussion, I think, again, that's something to do, but I, I think right now with everything going on, you know, if this was the middle of summer, and we didn't have a whole lot going on, that'd be one thing, but we're, we got a new software program in, coming in, we've got all these issues that we're currently dealing with. We've got employee issues we did, we're dealing with. We've got a new board that we're dealing with, and the burden of dealing with all of that as well.
And a new treasurer.
I just think that it's gonna, it's gonna take time to get all, all this to settle out, and I think the end of February, the other thing is, as far as the reports and all that go, we're, we're, I would imagine by the end of February, Open Gov will be full bore, and we'll be, we'll be doing day to days on that, so, you know, you won't have that issue anymore at all. You'll have your budget in front of you, you'll have all that process right in front of you, and, and we're going to need to spend some of our time as well to attend. They've, they've actually made videos of a lot of what they're doing of the learning process of Open Gov, and they'll give us a list of the ones that we need to attend those videos, get up to speed on how to get into the budget, how to get into seeing different peoples, you know, the numbers on different things, so a lot of that, I think, will work itself out by the end of February.
But I don't want, I, nothing in here, I interrupted you, and I'm sorry.
That's all right, I was done.
Nothing in here talks about Open Gov, and ultimately, the conversation comes back to that. You have a lot of hope in that, and like I said, I don't, but I hope I'm wrong, and you may, I told you yesterday, you may win that argument yet, and so I'm pulling for you. Huh? Well, I don't know.
Well, I will say one other thing. You asked yesterday, you asked every one of our applicants, what is one thing that you did to save some money and do something to move something, and I don't remember exactly how you answered or questioned them, but three of them of the five said, I changed software programs and it saved us a lot of money.
But I, I don't disagree with that. I think that's a good point, Commissioner. But timing is everything, and all that we're dealing with, you just outlined almost word for word, no, excuse me, you outlined very succinctly what I've been saying for a year, minimum of a year, especially lately, now that we do have that new treasurer, new software program, payroll issues, unbelievable spending going out there, and I'm, I'm wondering, so you stated, you stated the obvious, and I think well said and important. I just said, do we need two Rickards? I mean, that's what, that was somebody that knows a lot about our finances and does not have the confidence. So should we be considering getting him some additional help? Because I don't hear anybody saying, well, move him over there a hundred percent, even for this two months, six months, whatever. I mean, I, it's, I, I think he needs help. I don't know how anybody could do it. Am I overstating that with what, and you just, you just ran off the list, you know, I'm, I'm emphasizing what you said. Yes.
I think the best person to ask for that is sitting right here. Are, are you overwhelmed, or can, can you do the job?
There is a lot going on right now. We will get through it. The, once we get the software program up and going, that, that's a huge part of that. You know, everything else going on with, with budgeting and, whether it was the budget season and, and everything, yeah, there, there's a lot going on. I believe I can, I can take care of all those things. I will say that the stress of my job being on the line puts me over on that stress level. I can handle the stress of, of deadlines and of getting the software up and going, dealing with the problems that we have with that. Dealing with the issue of, the stress of my job being on the line puts me over.
Okay, so why do you feel like your job is on the line? I don't understand.
This may be more of a conversation for executive session.
The job discre, what's that?
I, I agree. Excuse me, speaking out of turn, but I agree, I think that's an executive session discussion. I would just agree with Brad on that. You know what?
Mike? It's on.
Yeah, you don't feel like open meeting, then what? And I, I have actually got something to share in my, this, if I, you know, if I could, you know, in my kind of show, tell you guys where I'm at, and then keep moving forward.
I'll just conclude with this, and then, then I am done. So for the day, thank you, Commissioners, and Commissioner Herzog. I would like to work very hard to get the Budget Committee on as early as possible. I can't begin to tell you when that might be because the work plan that I set out here for Mr. Rickert, I, I was so confident, would give him a lot of confidence that he's got free rein. So I am concerned to get the Budget Committee at some point in the near future. That could be two months, could be two weeks. I don't know what I would recommend right now. That's all I have. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hate to read this, but I'm going to read it. I'm not as eloquent as you two, and probably never will be, but that's okay. I'm not given much in the way of Commissioner Paulman's, until now. Apology. What you read from that young man. Still. So I might have to read this next week.
You want me to read it for you?
No. No. Because church, I'm known as the weepy prophet. Not that I'd be too close to a prophet. I feel like the observations I've made in the last week, I think we've made tremendous headway as three commissioners. First, I cannot stress enough, the commissioners are responsible for the county. The buck stops here. And we witnessed, all three of us, last week, stress and body language, speaking against one another, and I haven't seen it today. And so I, I commend both of you, and I thank you for that. And I think as a board, we have to make a pledge or a vow to the public and our employees that we are serious about what we do, the examples that we are. And I think I shared a little bit about this last week. We, we send a message, and we want our employees to act and our, the public to act a certain way when they come in this chambers, that, and we are the example, so we have to be that example. And it's, it's not easy all the time. I'm not going to say it is, and I'm not going to say I can do it all the time, but I'm going to do my darndest. So I want to thank you guys. I, I heard some, I heard Connie Hunter say today, heal the divide. I think that's what, that's what we're in the process of right now. And when we said the pledge of allegiance, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, we've, we've got to be undef, we can't be divided. That's the, that, divisible, it, it means division, and we can't have that. We've got, whether it's two to, two to one on a vote, that, that third person, if he's outvoted, we've got this to say, I'm still in support of it. You know, we, I, I, we spoke our piece, we can agree to disagree, we got to move on. So I appreciate you, this, this, the process we've made and the, and the forward motion we've made in the last couple days in this week, we can have. As for county organization, it's not so weepy about when you start talking about the organization. As you know, I came in with the view that we commissioners are accountable to the voters, and we should actively participate in the county's operations. I was against the county director, county.
Can't hear John? Are you plugged yet? Might be too low, John. No, it's not.
Tap it and see if it's live. John, tap on it and see if it's. Yes. Maybe.
Anything here, Miranda, you can see, obviously?
Yeah, pass that over. You want to try this instead?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
All right, he's got his, okay.
Thanks, Miranda Eric.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
All right, start over.
I was going to say, you don't have to start over, but you can.
No, sir. As for county organization, as you know, I came in with the view that we commissioners are accountable to the voters, and we should actively participate in the county's operations. I was against the county director, county administrator, form of government, and nothing personal to Mr. Rickert, who so far, I think, is quite a guy, and I'm impressed. And we, we don't have two Mr. Rickards, we have one, and I, I'm voting for him. We had a workshop, even though there was some discomfort, I think it was valuable and even necessary, certainly for me. All, all due respect to family members we heard from, I did not adopt my position on running the county, whether anyone had a family or not, or anything other than how to operate this government. And being a question of how to run an operation, it was most valuable for me to hear from those in operation. I heard how persons were fearful of coming forward, but we heard from four or five of the management positions here, which I took as a good sign. I want every manager here to know I am approachable. I have been an employee and a manager. I was in a union, I worked for over thirty years in private enterprise. I know a thing or two about how organizations work. I know a thing or two about private enterprise. My fellow commissioners have even more experiences, experience in organizations and life, and now government than I do. Together, we have a hundred, a hundred and fifty years of worth of experience in business. I believe that that value and that level of experience cannot be downplayed. This is the last thing I'm going to say about the workshop. The first item was presented by Mr. Rickert to consider changing the position and job duties and funding of the Assistant to Economic Development Coordinator. So per Mr. Rickert, it is okay for us to reexamine, excuse me, employment job functions and funding sources to make changes, but then it was supposed, it was proposed to consider the Director of Operations positions, functions, and funding. We heard that we shouldn't make the changes. So which is it? The answer is obvious. We should be examining and making changes where needed. Change, as for changes for me, it's too early in my time here for me to make any decision on changing anyone's job. Personally, I think it will benefit, it will, it will benefit, personally, I think I will benefit from going through a budget process so I can really get an idea of where things are and what they cost and what the value is to the county. So I am not saying I will never vote for changes. I'm only saying that right now, I want the employees here to know that my starting point is if they are doing their job, they should have no fear. Nevertheless, I'm looking at this organization with an eye to making it better based on my experience and what I see. But one thing that is important to me is that I am elected by the voters. I answer to them, as we all do. I answer to the citizens and the business owners. I don't feel personally that anyone here at the county needs to be between me and them. I want business to come to me, business says, plural, I want voters to come to me. I believe staff should assist us commissioners to carry out our directions and those of our constituents. So to sum up, I want to thank, I want to thank the voters for entrusting me with an important role in running our county, and I am pleased with my fellow commissioners that have pledged and maybe vowed even to put the past behind us and move forward. Head nod? Therefore, I look forward to more harmony and less stress for the employees and everyone else. If I vote for a change, you'll have my reasons, and they will be based on what I have learned about this organization, what I hear from my constituents, and my experience in business and in life, and through faith. God bless the United States of America, and God bless Curry County. Thank you. Doesn't deserve that.
Deep breath, everyone.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Pash, did you have anything? If I may?
I forgot, I forgot, this, oh, I'm sorry, but I, I want to make sure we get the order for the treasurer replacement signed. I think Commissioner Pash.
We waited on that for just a minute.
Yes, of course, I, that's, I, I just don't want to forget. I almost forgot I had to run.
You're a stickler for details. I could never complain. Commissioner Pash, I've been so mad at you and so wounded, and I know you've been mad and wounded at me. People come to me and they say, I may not vote for you, or maybe I didn't vote for you, but I know you care about this county deeply. And people. And so after I heard you, and what you read to our citizens, and the heart behind it, and then I hear you, I don't know if I'm in your leagues. I know I care a lot with everything I got. My grandfather and father, I wouldn't, if you don't earn your money, they'll, they'll tell, they'll, that's the first thing I'm going to hear when I get to see them in heaven. But that isn't all that should motivate me, of course. So, John, if anybody can pull this off to connect us and be the, the vice counsel, you know, I, I've been so envious, as I've seen other boards, Jackson County, Yamhill County, Lane County, Lynn County, Douglas, Coos, their boards, they are so united in any, anything that they have. The public's not, any, any resistance they have amongst one another, the public's not going to know, if it's even exist. I wouldn't know, as good as I know so many of those commissioners now. And so the challenge is, we can catch them, and we're on our way, and we can surpass them, and we've got four years to do that. I want my legacy to be that I did what I said it was going to do, and I made the effort, and I served with two incredible people. And, yeah, that's all I have, guys. Thank you, Council Huddle, for your patience.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I would like a motion to approve the order to fill the vacancy of treasurer, and actually, you actually directed that. This is the order, and again, it's just the order to carry out what you directed yesterday. You're still not on, John. But, and then, so maybe we don't need a motion, you just sign this order and.
That was covered in the amendments to the agendas of higher order part.
Yeah, so this, this is something that we just didn't overlook, so you would just, it basically says, whereas on or about December thirtieth, Treasurer-elect Hanscom submitted his resignation effective immediately, whereas it was filed, that letter was filed with the clerk on January fourth. Whereas three days has passed since the resignation, it's created a vacancy for the board to fill. The board had a special meeting, ordered staff to issue a press release and recruit candidates. The position was advertised in local newspapers and posted on the website. The board received resumes and letters of interest and applications. On January twelfth, twenty-one, the board interviewed candidates. Now, therefore, the Board of Curry County Commissioners hereby orders Douglas Baker be appointed Curry County Treasurer effective. appointed Curry County Treasurer effective, subject to passing a background check and upon taking the oath of office. And then pursuant to Article 5, Section 16 of the Constitution, he shall serve until the successor has been elected at the next general election, takes the oath of office. So that's what the, we're looking for the board to sign, please, and then we'll get that over to the clerk. And then the last thing I had, the memo that I put in executive session, it's a consensus of the board to put that in the materials for today's meeting, is that correct? Okay, I have nothing further, sorry about the interruption.
Good work, Council Huddle and Staff Jesuit, Director Rickert. I don't like to just adjourn the meeting without asking.
Well, that was the higher order, this replaced the higher order.
We slipped and added the question.
No, I think that got removed because the background check wasn't finished yet.
Yes.
That got pulled.
Good, good catch, John Jesuit. So, do I have agreement to adjourn here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. We'll see you Tu, Tuesday, excuse me, next Wednesday, the 20th. Thank you.